Okay, so let's just get started. Returning back to public session at 5:34. There is nothing to report from closed session. However, I did want to take the time and I'm not certain if she is. Do we have Eileen O'Hair Anderson?
You know, I do not see her joining yet.
Yeah, okay, well, I was just gonna take an opportunity to welcome her as our new general counsel with Laura Shulkin's retirement. But it doesn't look like she's here, so perhaps maybe we could do that at our next meeting. Eileen's already been, I think, really helpful, I think, in terms of providing some helpful advice in terms of how we're conducting our board meetings and following general procedures of other community colleges throughout the state and other boards of supervisors and city councils throughout the state as well. So you'll notice a little bit of a different format of how we're doing our Zoom, you know, in terms of having just board members be the main panelists and having other members of the public, whether or not from public comment, or as part of the administration, staff and faculty and so on, being as attendees. And when it's time to provide that public comment or make any sort of presentation, would admit you in as a panelist. And please, I think, raise your hand if we haven't done that, and Catherine will let you in as a panelist to make those comments. So I think with that in mind, we'll move to an action item, item 6.1, consideration to enter into an employment agreement. Prior to considering this matter as required by Government Code Section 54953, providing an oral summary of the recommendation regarding the salary and fringe benefits under the proposed contract for academic administrator. The district is entering into an employment agreement with Robert Frost as interim superintendent president, beginning January 10, 2022, through June 30, 2022, or until that position is filled on a regular basis by a permanent superintendent, whichever occurs first. Interim Superintendent President Frost will receive a monthly salary of $19,791.67, which will be prorated for any partial month of service. The interim superintendent president shall be entitled to receive the same fringe benefits as the administrative confidential employee group. Catherine, do we have any public comment?
I have received none, and I don't see any hands raised at this time.
Thank you. Welcome a motion from a trustee in terms of...
Still moved.
Second, Baldini.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, who was the first?
Baker.
Thank you.
Is trustee Goff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Trustee Rios?
Aye.
Trustee Baldini?
Aye.
Didn't trustee Soto Gonzalez?
Aye.
Trustee Baker?
Aye.
I'm seeing that trustee Deluna is not here.
I'm here.
Great. How do you vote, trustee Deluna?
Aye.
Thank you. And trustee Iverson is still?
Still missing.
And I will vote yes as well. So welcome Dr. Frost.
Thank you, everybody, for your support.
It's wonderful to have you here, here in Napa, Dr. Frost, knowing that you're here on campus every single day, knowing here that you were even actually on campus even before your contract started and putting in those early time here with the Napa Valley College family means a lot. And so it's just really great and refreshing to have you here. Thank you.
Thank you, and it's an honor to serve. I appreciate it.
And we do, we love your sweatshirt as well.
All right.
Catherine, moving to item 7.1, a public hearing.
Yes. We have John Tudor in the audience, and I am attempting to bring him in. It looks like I've got him in. Mr. Tudor, can you see and hear us?
I can see and hear you, and I hope the same is true in reverse.
Excellent, and I believe you had another presenter, was it Sophia?
Yes.
I do not see her in the group.
I'm wondering if she perhaps did not get the correct Zoom link.
Hmm.
I have her email address, let me do that really quickly, and then I'll get started.
I see her, I see her, Sophia Garcia, welcome.
Yes, John, I think I might have had your link, so I came in with your name, so.
Oh, I see how that happened, okay.
Thanks, John and Sophia, great to have you here. Whenever you're ready to kick it off, go for it.
We are ready, and thank you very much Chair Dodd and trustees. So this is my third go around with redistricting in 2010 and now in 2020. And if the voters continue to elect me, I hope to be doing this with you in 2030 as well. You are required, as are all agencies which elect by area or district, to readjust your district boundaries to essentially try and achieve as close to equal population as possible, along with some other criteria that Ms. Garcia will go through during her excellent presentation, which I had a chance to preview. So what's happened is, this board hired me, as you did in 2020 and in 2010 and in 2000, to serve as your agent for redistricting. I am the Napa County Register of Voters, and that's the hat I'm wearing tonight with you. And therefore, I'm deeply interested in redistricting, not just because I took a seminar on it in my university in sophomore year, but also because how you redistrict does impact what the election infrastructure looks like for the June and November elections in all years. Of course, you all are up in November, so that's why we're on a different schedule than the Board of Supervisors. You have until March to adopt your new district boundaries, and we are now in January, you'll have a second meeting in February to make the final determination. So tonight's public hearing is for you to review, and the public, a draft map that has been posted on a district or site that you helped purchase through a license agreement as part of our agreement. That map has been up for several weeks and has been advertised to the public as something that they can look at, play with, draw their own, et cetera, and Sophia again will go through that. So this is the draft map public hearing, and as I said, it is an opportunity both for the public and after the public hearing is closed, it's an opportunity for you as trustees to give me your input. Because the final map that will be presented to you on February 10 will be a result of this evening's meeting, if there are any changes after the presentation that you want to suggest to me. And Sophia and I will be taking notes as we go through, and we will take those changes, if any are suggested, build them into a new map, and have those ready for you to see on February 10. If there are no changes, we'll continue to proceed with this map. Now, I have had contact with a couple of trustees I've offered, and I always do, not just to the members of the Board of Supervisors, but to the college trustees and the Board of Education trustees, that I am serving as your agent here, and I'm happy at any time, and that includes not just at this meeting, but between now and February 10, if there are questions or comments you wish to make about the draft map. In fact, the draft map is the result of comments that I received, both from trustees on your board and trustees of the Board of Education, which I think made this a better map than it was when we started. That pretty much concludes what I wanted to say tonight, except for one thing. For the past four decades, beginning in 1990, this board has adopted the same districts or trustee areas, excuse me, as the Board of Education. You don't have to, that is not a requirement, but because your interest as an educational facility and their interest as an educational facility are close to each other and therefore serve the same communities of interest, it has been the tradition that the trustee areas are the same between the two agents. As I said, it's not a requirement, and should the map you're looking at is the same map that the Board of Education will be adopting on February 1, that is no reason that you cannot change your map. And if you do change your map, I may take that back to the Board of Education and see if they want to change their map. And public comment is still welcome up to and including your hearing on February 10 on these maps. So with that in mind, I will turn it over to Sophia, who will do a brief presentation, and then I will return to work with you Chair Dodd on the balance of the hearing.
Okay, let me share my screen. Oh, it says the host has disabled participant screen sharing.
So the screen is showing, Sophia, your presentation is up, you just need to say change slide.
Of course, yes, sorry, forgot about that. That works too, perfect. Okay, so hi, everyone, good evening, my name is Sophia Garcia, I'm with Redistricting Partners, we're the firm that's working with you and John on your redistricting effort. So we'll go to the next slide, please. So today we'll be covering a couple of different things, we'll talk about the traditional redistricting principles, we'll discuss the communities of interest that we've received so far from the public through the district or site, we'll talk about and show you some specific data that's in your district, the Asian Pacific Islanders and the Latino citizen voting age population, then we'll talk about ways that the public can get involved, and then next steps. So we'll go to the next slide, please. So the traditional redistricting principles are our guiding principles that we utilize for any draft maps, they're also the principles that we utilize when we review any public submissions. These principles are a number of criteria that have been upheld by the courts, and they're also the best practices for redistricting. John touched a little bit about the first criteria, and it's the criteria that holds the most weight, it's the reason why we do this process every 10 years to begin with, and that is the criteria of creating relatively, districts are relatively equal size, and there's quite a bit for this criteria. It's the one that says that we have to use the 2020 decennial census file, it's the one that lets us know that you do not have to create districts of exactly perfect size, you have what's called a total plan deviation of 10%, and we'll talk about that with your current data, and then also the draft plan that's being considered. And it also lets us know that for that decennial census file, we are utilizing the total count of people, and we're not looking at citizenship or voter data or voter registration data. The second criteria is to create districts that are contiguous, this means that they geographically touch one another. The only way that there would be a non-contiguous district is if you had an incorporated area or an island, but for your district, that's not the case. Maintaining communities of interest is a criteria that have been really uplifted for this redistricting cycle, we have another slide that talks a little bit more about it. But this is the point that lets the public know, lets the board know, that this is your redistricting process, you guys are all the experts of your district, folks who are residents of your district know the district better than any of us ever could. And so this is the piece that really reminds us to listen to you all, to residents, and hear the feedback from you all for the draft maps and throughout the process. Following additional government lines or looking at additional data is something that's allowable, something that the board can ask for and uplift. Some examples are city lines, county lines, we've heard renter data, school district lines is something that could be asked or added to a map. And then finally, to keep districts that are compact, and here in California, we have a rather elegant definition for this, because we know this can be a little complicated, and that is to not bypass nearby population for faraway population. On this note as well, we want to note that just because a district may look a little funny, may have a funny shape, that doesn't necessarily mean that it's been gerrymandered, there may be a community of interest that's trying to be kept together, there may be a census block that is just a funny shape, that has to be that way. And so this is a criteria that's low on the list, but it is something that we'll look at holistically. So we'll go to the next slide, please. So this one goes a little bit more in depth on that equal population, and it again lets us know that the metric is people, not citizens, that is something that we get asked very frequently during this process, and we understand, you know, it only happens once a decade. It also talks about the metric, which is deviation, so this is the measure of how close a district is to an equal size or a perfect size. So we're going to see positive deviations and negative deviations. If it's positive, that means it's a little bit over what the ideal size would be, and if it's negative, then that means it's a little underpopulated. But that's okay, because again, we have that range that we can work with, which is that 10%. We'll go to the next slide, please. On the note, more deviation, because again, this is something that comes up pretty frequently, and because that deviation is a number that is easily understood, easily digestible, we don't, you can as a board have a plan or want a plan that's of a certain deviation, but that's not necessarily something that you have to stick to, you have that range for local governments of 10%. For Congress, they have a one-to-one, so they can only have a deviation of one person per district, but for local governments, you, because we know that communities of interest or additional criteria can be looked at, you don't have to necessarily stick to a lower deviation. So go to the next slide, please. So communities of interest, or you could hear it referred to as COI, which would be capital C-O-I, is that criteria that really uplifts the community aspect. They're the building blocks of districts, because oftentimes when we receive any communities of interest or discussions or any topics from the board, those would be the building blocks of a district. Because of that, because we are talking about people's narrative pieces and how they relate to the district, they could be subjective, and so we just want to remind members of the public and ourselves to just be open-ended as we're listening to testimony. We may hear competing communities of interest testimony, and then that will be the job of the board to then direct us on which way we are going to go in terms of that testimony. So we're here to listen, but again, the board is the one that has the final say on direction, and will have the final say on the plan. There are some communities of interest that are covered under the Voting Rights Act, which are Latinos, Asians and African Americans, and here in California, those are the three groups that would have a large enough population to draw a majority-minority district. So we do recognize there's a lot of other groups out there, but here in California, those are those main three. And race can be a community of interest, however, it cannot be the predominant factor in drawing a district unless Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act is invoked, and that's why we have those slides that are going to show you more of the Asian Pacific Islander and the Latino population that's concentrated in your district. So at the moment, neither of those groups or the Black population have a large enough population to solely draw a district based on race, but it is something that we've considered throughout the plan. So we'll go to the next slide, please. Because communities of interest is something that again, only comes up once a decade, we have a couple of questions here, they should be on your site as well, that talks through how members of the public or how other people can think about giving their testimony, and that is to ask yourself, does the community have a shared culture, characteristic or bond? So what are those things that bond your community together? The second one is talking about the geography of your community, so what is, can it be mapped? Can you give us street names? Can you give us specific areas of the district? And then third, it's talking about representation and just reminding us that redistricting and when we're talking about this aspect, it is about your relationship to the board. So in this instance, it's the Napa Valley Community College Board, so how is your community related to that specific board? So we have just sort of these three thought questions that are here that serve to assist anyone who's thinking through their testimony and would like to give it to the board. So go to the next slide, please. So your agency, like a lot of other Napa agencies, which is wonderful, has decided to utilize the online mapping tool called Districtor. It is great that within the past decade, that online tools have become more available, easier to use, user-friendly for the public, and also within a range where boards can afford to utilize it and have it available to the public. So Districtor is an online mapping tool that is out of Tufts University in Massachusetts, and we work with them to make sure that the data that's on your specific site, and we work with John, which has been wonderful, to ensure or let us know if there's been any discrepancies. Because a number of other agencies are utilizing Districtor, it's really important that if any member of the public would like to submit a map for Napa Valley College, that you utilize the link below, and you can also find the Districtor link on the Napa Valley College redistricting website. So again, if you're here or would like to submit a map for the college, please use that link. And we'll go to the next slide, please. The next two slides show a visualization that we pulled on Districtor that shows the Latino community citizen voting age population data, and CVAP or Citizen Voting Age Population Data is an estimated data that we get from the census, and it shows us more information on residents of the population of your particular district. It also shows us the concentration of the Latinos, so we can see that most of them are within the city of Napa. But again, as we said, there isn't enough Latino population to draw a specific district, and we haven't been told by legal counsel that we had to draw a Section 2 district, but we can see the overview and see the growth of this particular population. And we'll go to the next slide, which will show us the Asian Pacific Islander community, and we can see that most of the concentration of this particular community is in American Canyon. And again, we'll see the more detail of the CVAP data for your draft map, and that's coming a little bit later in the presentation. So go to the next slide, please. So for your map submissions, you had two map submissions last Friday, when I checked on your site, and we can double-check to ensure that there has been not another one, but the first one that you had was titled College Draft 12102021, and the ID number is 92275. And this is a shot that we took from Districtor, which shows you the seven districts that are drawn, and it also shows you the population of those particular districts, so this was a pretty equal plan and does look a little similar to the final plan that you'll be reviewing this evening. So go to the next slide, please. We also have the data for your current lines, so this is the current construction of your Napa Valley College lines, and if we go to the next slide, we'll be able to see a little bit more data on it. So for your college, we looked at the total plan deviation utilizing the 2020 data, and you do have a 14.5% deviation, which means that you are over the allowable 10% total plan deviation. So this means that regardless of whatever plan you pass as a board, there will have to be some amendments, and I also see that John is unmuted himself. Would John, would you like to add some more context to this slide?
Yes, thank you, Sophia, you and I are a great team, a dog and pony show here, I'm the dog, you're the pony. So let me just point out for the board, if you'll look at trustee area 1, it's had growth. Trustee area 1, this is your current trustee area 1, is the southern and eastern part of the city of Napa. The biggest growth, of course, was in American Canyon, which from 2010 to 2020 saw the most growth in the county. And then finally, you'll see in trustee area 7, which is the up-valley area, that we had a 7.7% shrinkage in population over those between 2010 and 2020, and that's a result of what's happening in terms of the cost of living in Napa County and various other factors. So to get to the 14.5, you add the top of the highest plus and the lowest minus, and so you add district trustee area 3 and trustee area 7 to get the 14.5%. And that's beyond the 10%, and that's why we went to work and why you hired us and Redistricting Partners to bring back this draft plan that you're discussing this evening. Thank you, Sophia.
Exactly, thank you, thank you, John. So we'll go to the next slide, please. So we have the citizen voting age population data here as well, and that is broken down for your current districts, and it shows you the Asian CVAP, Black and Latino CVAP, and we can see that the Latino CVAP is pretty widely dispersed, pretty consistently at the 20% for all of your districts. So we'll go to the next slide, please. So the map submission and draft that will be looking a little bit more in-depth this evening is titled Draft Map for 1182022 College Hearing, and the ID number is 98456. And we have in-brand an atlas for you, which shows you more in-depth district by district and has a data table as well. So we'll go to the next slide. And here's the overview of the draft plan and district, and John, feel free to unmute yourself or add more context as we go through the plan as well.
Sophia, thank you, you knew I'd jump in at this point, so.
It's helpful, it's great.
For the board's benefit, so you didn't notice, but Catherine, can you go back, before you go back, if you look in the upper-left corner, you'll see the shape of trustee area 7 extends out further to the west, right there. And if you look at trustee area 4 on the far eastern side, there's a little lake you can see just above the 4, that's Lake Currie. So if you'd go up one slide, please, Catherine, you'll notice on this slide, District R did not have the Sonoma County portion of trustee area 7 in the way it was built, and we were unable because of their break in the holidays, because they're a university and for other reasons, to get that added. There are 730 people in that area, so it's not going to change the deviations when you're talking about 138,000 people as the county as a whole. And by the same token, on the eastern side, you'll see where Lake Currie is, that wasn't included in that map either. Now, both the college and the Board of Education extend into Sonoma County, because that's Calistoga Joint Unified School District territory, and those voters vote both for the school district and for the Board of Education and for the college. The piece on the eastern side is in Napa Valley College, but it's not in the County Board of Education. That area around that lake is the Fairfield-Susun Unified School District, and that's there because it's easier for those parents to send their kids just down to Green Valley than it is to truck them over the mountain to the Napa schools, especially now that Capel Valley and Wooden Valley are closed. And so those people vote for Fairfield-Susun, and they vote for Solano County Board of Education trustee area 2, but they do belong to Napa Valley College. So that's the only difference between the two agencies, between the Board of Education and the college. You include that, they do not. There are only 230 people in that area, so again, it doesn't make any impact on the deviation. Sophia, thank you, go right ahead.
Wonderful, thank you for that additional context, John. So we'll go to the next slide, and we'll go to the next slide. So we also have the data for the draft plan, and here we have a total plan deviation of 4.3%, so well below... 4.3%, so well below the 10% that we have the parameters of. They're all pretty close, so this is a good relatively equal plan. We'll go to the next slide, please. We also have the data for your citizen voting age population data for each of the drafts as well. So we do see that the Asian district or the Asian population in District Three is at 35.5%, and that correlates to the slide that we saw earlier, concentrated in American Canyon, so there is a fairly large population for that area, as along with the Latino population for District Two has a 30.1%. But again, none of the districts have a majority-minority district, but we have seen growth in those populations. So go to the next slide, please. We also have a more zoomed-in version for each of the districts. And again, John, feel free to unmute yourselves. I do have some notes from your reviewing the plan. So for your District One, it follows the Napa River. One of the boundaries is First Street. The northern boundary is First Street. You also follow the Napa-Valejo Highway, and then the boundary along American Canyon is Wetlands Edge Road. When we sent these, there should also have been a web map made available to you so you can zoom in and see more of the specific boundaries as you review the plans. So go to the next slide. So for District Two, it is focused in the city of Napa. The northern boundary is Trincas. The southern boundary is First Street. The eastern boundary is the Napa River and Soskow Avenue, and then the west boundary is the South Freeway Drive. And we'll go to the next slide. This is the district that is focused in American Canyon. And then if we remember when we talked about compactness and some of the weird funny shapes could be in part to the census geography, and I see John unmuted himself again, and I think would like us to give more context on this particular district, so.
Thank you, Sophia. So if you'll all recall, trustee area three was the city of American Canyon in the 2010 redistricting. American Canyon has grown beyond being able to fit into a single trustee area. So we had to split the city of American Canyon. We didn't have to do that with the Board of Supervisors because there are only five of them, and each supervisor district is larger in population than if you divide by seven. So the city of American Canyon all fits into a single supervisor district, but it does not fit into a single Board of Trustees for the college district or trustee area, and that's true for the Board of Education. So I worked with both your current trustee from American Canyon from trustee area three, Ms. Goff, and with the trustee Cindy Biederman from the Board of Education, and they came up with a great idea, which was to put all of the schools in American Canyon in a single trustee area. And this is the same trustee area for the Board of Education and for the college. So that was a great idea that came from them, and we redrew the map to make that happen. And I'll show you in a minute when Sophia gets to trustee area four what we had to do in order to allocate the population in the city of American Canyon between the two trustee areas. Thanks, Sophia.
Thank you, John, and we'll continue to the next slide to talk about District Four. So District Four is the eastern portion or the eastern district, and it follows Napa-Valejo Highway and the Napa River as its main highways. And John, if you could, if you'd like to give more context, that'd be great, too.
Yeah, so if you look in the lower left-hand corner, there's a little thumb sticking down, right there. Thank you, Catherine. You're great. That little thumb is the piece of American Canyon that we had to pick up to get the right amount of population into trustee area three and leave some for trustee area four. That's the area around Walmart. It's to the east of Highway 29 or Broadway. It picks up a couple of the new apartment complexes there, and so trustee area four will have that amount of American Canyon. It's not a large part of trustee area four, but it is some of it. And then again, Catherine, if you can move up to that little lake on the right-hand side in the purple, this is the area of the Fairfield-Susun Unified School District that you have in the college and trustee area four, which is not in the Board of Education. As I said, there are only 230 people there, so it did not change the deviation when Sophia and her team were able to get the map corrected in their other software program. Thanks, Sophia.
Wonderful. So we'll go to the next slide, please. So District Five is the western district for the plan, and it follows First Street, Lincoln Avenue, and Wine Country Avenue. It's a really cool street name. So we'll go to the next slide. So District Six, it follows the St. Helena Highway, and it picks up the population of St. Helena and Yountville along that highway. And we'll go to the next slide. And the final district is most of the northern portion of your district, and along the eastern side, that boundary is East Monticello Road. And we'll go to the next slide. So those are, you have that overview. You are able to review all of the districts with more detail. So if there's any members of the public who'd like to be more involved, this is the meeting of draft maps, so they are not the final plans. We're here this evening to hear any amendments from the board or additional feedback from the public. You can also go to the Napa Valley College redistricting website to stay up to date for any information, and again, to find that Districter link. You can also find the link to the next meeting, which is directly on that site as well. So go to the next slide, please. And you have your next hearing on February 10th at 5:30, and that will be the hearing where the board will have their final map adoption. And we'll go to the next slide. I love this slide that someone from staff did, because it is the next two slides, this one and the next one, because it's a wonderful calendar for folks who are residents of the county of Napa, so you can see redistricting for the county, the city, the Napa Valley College, the County Office of Education, and the Unified School District, calendared by color. And then if we go to the next slide, you also have the specific dates and locations and times of all of the meetings. And the next Napa Valley College meeting, again, on Thursday, February 10th at 5:30, and it's definitely virtual. I'm not sure if it's hybrid. Maybe staff can touch on that piece. But we'll go to the next slide, and that should be it. So it should be done. So thank you for having us here, and we are here to listen to your feedback. John and I will be here for the discussion.
Thank you, Sophia. Chair Dodd, it's back to you for the opportunity for you to ask the public to comment if there are anybody waiting.
Yeah, no, thank you, John, and thank you, Sophia, as well. Catherine, do we have any public comment?
We have one panelist with hand raised and one attendee. Looks like Bob Vanderfeld would like to comment.
Yeah, let's do public comment first, and then we'll take trustee comments and questions after that.
Catherine, am I up?
You're on.
Great, thank you. So I'm Bob Vanderfeld. You'll see me a little later in another capacity, but I was raising my hand here as the co-chair of the Voter Choice Napa Committee, which is the committee that is the official advisory board to the registrar of voters, Mr. Tudor. And I just wanted to add in that the Voter Choice Napa Committee has done a lot of work on redistricting and getting information out to the community. We have led workshops that we held at the campus on the District R software that I helped bring in when we were here in dealing with redistricting for the city of Napa when they went to the first time for district lines for city council. We've also partnered with a number of community groups to get the word out about the redistricting. And so I just wanted to let you know, although this may not be a hot topic, it may not attract a lot of attention, the word has gotten out, and Mr. Tudor and his staff have been very cooperative in working with us on making sure that the public is fully informed about this very important issue. And with that, I'll conclude. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other members of the public with their hand up. Trustee Baker has her hand up.
Yeah, I was on mute, sorry, but I did want to thank Bob for, you know, that work that you're doing in the community in terms of spreading the word. I mean, that's extracurricular activity, and I think that can say thank you on behalf of the community for doing all that work, and I know how hard you worked this process for the city of Napa redistricting a couple of years ago, too. So thank you for that. Catherine, do we have any other members of the public comment with hands raised?
No, I do not see any other hands raised.
Okay. Well, then, we'll close the public comment of this portion of the meeting, and then we could move to trustee comments and questions. Let's start with trustee Baker.
My question is, what happens when the redistricting means I no longer live in my district?
Ms. Baker, when is your term up?
Um, 24.
Right, so that would mean that you would not be able to run in 2024 in that district. It does not affect you until the end of your current term.
Okay. So, but if I wanted to stay on the board at that point, I...
You would have to, you'd have to either move into a different district that you did represent, or you could run in the district that you're in, that you would be moved into. What trustee area did you move out of, and which one did you move into?
It looks like I would be moving out of one and into four.
I see. And where do you live?
On Kaetano, at the very, very, very edge.
Yeah, we had that happen to another trustee in another agency, not a school district. Yes, so you would serve until the end of 2024, and then at that point, someone from district trustee area four would be running for that seat. You're in one now.
But we're on opposite, so District Four is, I believe, running in 2022.
2022, yes. Yes, so that person would run in District Four. You would still be the representative of District One until 2024, and at that point, you would have to decide if you wanted to move to a district that you could run in in 2024. I should mention Chair Dodd and the members of the trustee area. Incumbency and the location of candidates for public office are specifically prohibited for cities and counties. They are not specifically prohibited for trustee areas for school districts or for any other agency like the Regional Park and Open Space District. However, legal counsel from the county and from redistricting partners in their contacts with people at the state level say to follow best practices, the no agency should redraw district lines to protect an incumbent. You could, but they say it's not a best practice.
I mean, is it also, I mean, just to that question, I don't see any other board members with their hands up. So I think trustee Baker is making, I mean, interesting point, too, because you have individuals who live in a specific district to elect a board member, but then two years later, they're given, I guess, a different member that they didn't elect. So I mean, I guess I would kind of look at it maybe in a different way, and instead of, you know, drawing lines to serve an incumbent, but more in terms of a measurement of taking into account for those citizens in that original district who had elected a certain trustee, but then, you know, subsequently, two years later, they're given a different trustee that they didn't elect.
Yes, I understand that. We've had that happen in the county, of course. So with the Board of Supervisors, there are new supervisor districts where there will be a supervisor representing that district effective in January of 2023 who was not elected by those people. They'll have a chance to get, to elect them in 2024, but there is that two-year period where that can happen, as happened here between trustee areas one and four.
Trustee Baker, go ahead.
Just to follow up, not that I want trustee Iverson to start quaking in his boots or anything, but if I wanted to run against him in order to keep my seat for a full term, a plus-two, I guess, would we both be incumbents?
Well, it's, the law is very clear that redistricting cannot change someone's term of office, and therefore, you are the representative of trustee area one until the end of 2024 when your term expires.
So I can't run against trustee Iverson? Is that what you're saying?
No, I guess you could if you wanted. You'd be abandoning your seat in trustee area one, however, and that would create a vacancy.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Okay. But technically, sorry, I just wanted to also note that technically voters this year would be selecting the new area for trustee, right?
That's correct.
Can you all just chime in to maybe some clarification, too? So no trustee term will be cut short. However, I think, as John noted, if there was an instance where two or more board members were in a single district, then if a board member would like to elect to cut their term short and then run in their new district, they are able to do so, but they will, for this process, it does not cut anyone's term short. You are all voted in your offices for a specific term, and you have the ability to fulfill that term unless you elect to and then run in a new district if multiple of you are in a new district. Does that make sense?
It does. Does anyone have any more questions? None? And then, John, would you just, this is my last, just going over the timeline in terms of, you know, between now and, I think, February 10th?
So let me explain. First of all, I want to thank the Voters' Choice Napa. It was their idea to do the slide that Sophia trumpets all over the state for us with the consolidated calendar. They asked us to do that, and a member of our voter registry, of our elections division, put that together. So that was a lot of work, but it was well worth it. So what's going to happen now is if the board does not ask me to make any specific changes tonight, and there's been no public testimony, we will convert this map to what's called a shape file, and that shape file will be transmitted to our GIS agency. And I talked with Ms. Kittle, and the college does not have its own GIS platform, neither does the County Board of Education. So the county, at no expense to the college or the Board of Education, not this go-around, that may change in 2030, will host your GIS map of your trustee areas where the public will come to look up who their trustee is, where their address is, who they vote for, et cetera. We'll host that for the next decade, and that will be done after, of course, you make your decision on February 10th. So we will get the shape files from Sophia, and then we will create your lookup map. We will let you and the public know where that map is so they can... We will let you and the public know where that map is, so they can begin looking at it and looking by their specific address. And then on the 10th, that will be the map you adopt. It's the GIS map. It's not this map. And that GIS map will, of course, have the Sonoma County portion of your trustee area seven, and it will have the Fairfield-Susun Unified School District portion of trustee area four. And all of the statistics have been adjusted already for that and still come up with that same 4.3% deviation. So that's all that happens. You will be hearing from me, hopefully no later than the week of the 20, the week of the 24th, that the map is available and that you and your staffs and the public can start looking at the GIS map and deciding if they want to make any further testimony. And that's true, of course, of the board as well, that they can make that testimony at your meeting on the 10th. Nothing's final until you adopt the final resolution. And I'm working with Ms. Kittle, and I assume with your new general counsel on that resolution, that I'm sure Ms. Kittle will run by her. And that is the final action, and those districts will, those trustee areas will be in place for the November election.
Thanks, John. Do we have, if there is additional, because I think a lot of folks are just digesting this now, but maybe just a little more thoroughly, thanks to your very thorough presentation with, maybe I'll call it Sophia's presentation, John, is a, in terms of that deadline passed to February 10th. So February 10th isn't a drop dead date, but that's kind of what we have in our calendars right now is the, is the goal. I mean, do we have an opportunity to push that any further, just to welcome any, any further additional, you know, public comment or comments from, from our trustees moving forward?
Of course, you have flexibility. It's your map and it's your decision. However, all of the agencies to date, and there are only two, the Board of Supervisors has adopted, and essentially the Regional Park and Open Space District has taken its final direction to me. But we certainly, because your trustee areas does need to go before the Committee on School District Reorganization in March, and you do have a hard deadline of April. And they have a meeting, their only meetings are in March. So February 10th is a pretty hard deadline. And I really, as I did with Ms. Kittle on Friday and Thursday last week, urged her to alert the board that these maps are available and that I'm available 24/7 by cell phone or email if there are any comments between now and then. But we hope that because we need time to convert the shape files into the final map that you'll be working on, that you do make your final decision on the 10th.
Great. And I'm sorry, John, we do have one more question from trustee Baldini.
Thank you, Sophia and John. It, you know, just looking over the years that, from 2000, 2010, and now this proposal, district five has taken on a whole new shape, heading out towards Brown's Valley as an example. It's crossed and recrossed Highway 29 and gone south. And essentially, the, well, not from a statistical standpoint, at, at view, it appears that the communities of interest as far as populations have, have remained the same, though the, the area has geographically expanded quite a bit, but the population is, is still the same. How do you, could you give me a brief explanation? Or is this the final, final? I hear that you just said I have until the 10th to comment to you. Is that correct?
Well, you have any time to comment to me, Mr. trustee Baldini. District area, trustee area five, really, the two, four, five, and one did not have, one had to shrink a little bit because it grew, but not very much. It was trustee areas three and four that had to change substantially because of the growth in population in American Canyon. So five just came out of that. I had no input from trustees of either the Board of Education or the college. And we just tried to follow some community of interest, especially in the Brown's Valley area, to try and pull that into a single trustee area, both for the Board of Education and for the college. We did get a comment from the Board of Education in trustee area one, in the area around Kilburn and Laurel Streets, just to the south of trustee area five. They did ask that I change that boundary to include all of the enrollment area for the Napa Valley Language Academy. You know, we did make that change, which changed the population very little. It did require a little bit of change in trustee area five from the other map that Sophia mentioned, which is on the site. And that's a map I drew to begin with, just to get the discussion started. So yes, if you have any specific questions about trustee area five, you're welcome to send those to me or call me, whatever, and I will take those into account before. But I'd love to get that done before we start creating the shape file. And I'm hoping Sophia will get started on that tomorrow. But we have a couple of days, and that can always be changed later. But the longer we wait, the more embedded the new maps become.
Thank you very much, sir. I appreciate that. Thank you.
So Chair Dodd, one last thing. I just wanted to point out to the board, I failed to do this at the beginning, that this is the fourth, that this is the third of four public opportunities to talk to your board. There was a September 16th kickoff with workshop of all the agencies, except for the Napa Valley Unified School District. There was a November 16th workshop of just the college and the Board of Education. And then, of course, this hearing is your draft hearing, and then February 10th is your final map adoption hearing, which is also available to the public for comment, et cetera. So this is a long process that's been going on now for almost eight months as we keep going. And I, I'm very pleased, I know the Board of Education from the county, Barbara Nemko's team is pleased with their map. And I'm hoping that we can continue the tradition of the two maps matching, but they don't have to continue that way.
Thank you, John, and thank you for always making yourself available, as you always have.
Very good. Thank you all, and we'll get started on the shape file. Sophia, have you done the shape file for the Board of Education yet?
Yes, I'm just gonna do a final check and then I can sit down.
Very good. Thank you. I'm just doing a little business, because that's the same shape file as yours, so we may be done.
Right.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you both. We'll move on to item, item eight, item main point one, general public comment. We have a public comment opportunity, which is governed by the State of California Brown Act. By definition, this is an opportunity to hear concerns, perspectives, and differing vantage points. The board is not able, under the Brown Act, to engage in any level of conversation or discussion, but we look forward to this opportunity to gather community input. The Board of Trustees will devote up to 15 minutes to review comment to the board regarding any subject not appearing as an agenda item for this meeting, but over which the board has jurisdiction. No action or discussion will occur at this time on such items. Each comment will give a three-minute time limit. Catherine, do we have any public comment?
I have not received any public comment, and I don't see any hands raised.
Right. Seeing none there, we'll move on to item nine. And I did, I do think that our general counsel now, Eileen O'Hara Anderson, Eileen, I gave you a shout out a little bit earlier, did want to recognize you and thank you for stepping up and, you know, I call you our, our new general counsel, but that's not, not generally the case, as you've had a very longstanding relationship with the college, but, you know, serving with your partner Laura Shulkin. But now with Laura's retirement, we're, we're really thrilled that you stepped up and will continue representing us, and, and thank you for, for being here.
Well, thank you very much, trustee Dodd, for those very kind words. I, I know I have big shoes to fill.
Thank you. Thank you, and good to see you.
And you.
And so moving to, we'll start with nine point two, our academic support. Dr. Tahada?
Good evening, trustee Dodd and fellow trustees. I am the academic senate president. I acknowledge the sacred land of the Napa Valley, where we work, live, and learn, and build community, that, and I recognize it as the unceded land of the Patwin, Mishwell, Mustutl, Mayakma, and Miwok, who have stewarded this land for hundreds of generations. I am giving this report from the unceded land of the Alone. I affirm that this acknowledgement is insufficient. It does not undo the harm that has been done and continues to be perpetrated now against indigenous people, our land, and our water. Happy New Year and New Semester, trustees, colleagues, and the Napa Valley community. I am happy to welcome the interim president, Dr. Frost. I look forward to working with you collaboratively, as does the academic senate leadership. I'd like to report that the multi-constituent policy revision task force met last Friday and has begun its work on creating an administrative procedure for 6,200, the budget process. The academic senate leadership affirms its commitment to shared governance and in ensuring the part, effective participation of all constituent groups. Today was flex day, and it provided an opportunity for connection and rich dialogue on how our college can move forward. The day was, the day was, however, overshadowed by faculty's inability to connect and retrieve our class rosters. There continues to be significant technical difficulties with our new self-serve software. We also know that the students, we received emails from students that are having difficulty in registering for classes as well. These technical problems are not small glitches. They present a significant obstacle to serving our students. Last semester, several faculty, including myself, were unable to post our grades, our final grades for students in the new software. And so today, we continue to receive emails that document the students are having trouble registering for classes as well. So we're hoping that as we move forward, we can resolve these continued technical difficulties. Lastly, we anticipate receiving the IEPi funds of $200,000 to begin the academic senate work of transforming professional development into a professional learning paradigm and enhancing collaboration across constituent groups. And I'll have, I'll be sharing more about this later on in, in the semester. Let's see. So I look forward to working with the administration in resolving the myriad of issues that, that we face and continue to model effective participatory governance. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Tahada. I appreciate you sharing the frustration that you've, you've had, and your colleagues have had with the RIT challenges. It's the first I've heard of that, so, so thanks for, for sharing that with us. For nine point three, administrative confidential senate report. Paul Harris, please.
Good evening, trustees, colleagues, and the Napa Valley College community. I'd like to begin by echoing the words of Dr. Tahada. Much of today was spent running, I would, I won't say interference, but trying to rectify challenges with the software. And over, over the break, I'm working with folks to get positive attendance hours logged appropriately, as well as final grades from last semester. The administrative senate would like to welcome everyone to the spring 22 semester and welcome interim president superintendent Dr. Robert Frost to Napa Valley College. The administrative senate would also like to thank trustee Jennifer Baker for her work as the president of the Board of Trustees for the past year, and we congratulate trustee Jeff Dodd on his selection to serve as the president of the board this year. We hope and trust that the holiday break provided everyone with an opportunity to reinvigorate, refocus, establish the resolve necessary to move our college forward, and that spending time with friends and family, as was appropriate and safe, was refreshing and centering for everyone. With the holiday season behind us, it is time for the work of stabilizing the college via development and implementation of administrators, administrative procedures and processes by strong and truthful engagement and shared and effective participatory government, governance, development and implementation of strong budgetary controls and processes, and collaborative and cohesive work to reaffirm and maintain ACCJC accreditation. Administrative senate members are hard at work with faculty and classified professionals to reaffirm the values, processes, and expectations of and for Napa Valley College. We look forward to working with Dr. Frost to move the college forward while simultaneously working to affirm the value of the administrative senate constituency. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Item nine four, associate students of the college. Marcus Tasson, are you there?
Yes, it's Marcus Texan, like, I'm from Texas.
I was gonna ask you. Sorry about that, Marcus.
Yeah, you're good. You're good. Good evening, trustees, President Frost, faculty, and distinguished, distinguished faculty and community members. I'm, on behalf of ASNBC, we're incredibly excited to be returning from our holiday break. This coming week, we will be having our welcome week, so we will be assisting the Welcome Center and hosting Welcome Week on the 19th, so tomorrow and Thursday, the 19th and 20th. We would also like to welcome Dr. Frost and, or excuse me, excuse me, President Frost to campus. We are incredibly excited to see what work is to come. So it's a rather brief report, so that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcus. I know how busy you guys are at Welcome Week, so please pass on our thanks to the rest of, to you and, and your colleagues. Classified Association Report. Ms. Larson?
Hi, sorry. I just wanted to welcome President Frost on behalf of the classified professionals. And the student thought he had a short report, but this is shorter, so, thank you.
Thank you. Item nine six, our classified senate report. Danielle Alexander, who I think we're welcoming for the first time. Catherine, is she here? Oh, she, I see her on the, on our panelist list.
I forgot to unmute. I beg your pardon. I was talking away to myself.
I bet you were great.
Hello, thank you for welcoming me. I was elected the president of the classified senate in December, just one month ago. We have not had time to meet as a body yet, so I will have a much better report next time, but I did want to participate in the meeting tonight and let you know that I will be here and be active. And I think we're, we're off to a great start, so I hope that we have a lot to do with each other in the future, and I'll just be bringing a lot more from the classified senate as the months progress, and I believe it's a two-year term, so we'll be seeing each other. Nice to see you and meet you. Thank you.
Wonderful. No, thank you, thank you for your comments and, yeah, welcome aboard for the, for the ride. We're all glad to have you here.
Thank you.
Our Faculty Association Report by Kristy Uemoto.
Good evening, board, and Happy New Year. How is everyone tonight? I also wanted, I guess I'll be the last one out of the constituents tonight to welcome Dr. Frost to our campus, and we hope you will enjoy your stay here. I just wanted to echo some of the sentiments by my colleague, Dr. Tahada. We had our flex day today, which may be why I'm a little punchy, because we were on Zoom from 9:00 AM until 4:00 AM today, just to jump back on for this. The, I just wanted to sort of, you know, let, let everybody know, let the board know, let our interim president know that, you know, we're really... let our interim president know that, you know, we're really having a lot of difficulties right now. We had, you know, today, just in my department meeting alone, half of my colleagues had an issue of communication between our self-service system and Canvas wherein all of these students were listed in Canvas, but, I mean, were listed in self-service, but none of them were in Canvas. And some had two or three in Canvas, well, all of them were listed in self-service. So that's a, that's a discrepancy within the rosters. As for myself and several of my other colleagues, we had all of our students in the Canvas, but no roster available in self-service. And I just wanted to sort of, you know, make sure that we understood that this, well, so silly, is kind of a serious issue because when we are starting classes tomorrow morning and we don't know who's in our class and who isn't in our class, particularly in this climate of students being sort of pushed in and out for things like, you know, not getting their vaccines cleared and whatnot, we really don't want to look like we don't know what we're doing in front of our students. And we, we thought we should put in a ticket to IT and speak to the person in charge of IT, only none of us could seem to come to a consensus of who that was at the moment. And so there are, you know, there are a lot of issues that we, you know, sort of systemic issues and this issue with IT just persists. And, you know, I know the IT has had shortages and they're working hard and they are good people, but I also know that, you know, we've seen such enrollment drop-off of our students. And while we say, yes, that is true up and down the state, that is not a pandemic problem, that is a Napa Valley College problem. And that is something that has been plaguing this college since three to five years before the pandemic, we've had drop-offs in enrollment. And so we can't really blame the pandemic and I just, it, it bothers me that in this time, when there is so much uncertainty, our enrollment adds another layer of uncertainty for our students who are excited to start the semester tomorrow. So that's just my, you know, what I was most concerned about today, but, you know, I'm hoping that it will get resolved quickly and it is good to see everyone and that is my report.
Thank you, Kristy, and I appreciate your frustration. I'm on the IT, I think, it, I know Dr. Frost is already, it's already one of the foremost goals, I think, in his, in his mind too, and I think you'll be seeing it too in terms of how the board and their discussion of their goals later this evening as well. So, thank you. And thank you for 12 hours on Zoom. Impressive, very impressive. So moving to general information, reports at 10.1, our president and cabinet reports, Dr. Frost.
Thank you trustee Dodd. So at NBC, does the president begin with his or her report and then go down the line or does the president wait until the end after recognizing everyone else? This is unrehearsed, folks.
Yeah, no, this is very unrehearsed. I think, Dr. Frost, we will leave it to you and in terms of your discretion and how you'd like to move it forward on, on this and presenting your report and the cabinet reports, whatever order that you'd like to go in and, and whatever particular meeting, you know, this meeting and in the future, you can revise if necessary based on how tonight goes, but.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure, Catherine.
I'm having trouble this.
You just muted, Cap.
You just muted yourself.
I was gonna go ahead and recognize Dr. Parker, Doug Roberts, then Holly, then Patricia, and that way we, and then I'll go at the end.
Great. I'll, I'll, I'll leave it to you to, to emcee.
Dr. Parker?
Okay, great. Good evening, Board of Trustees. So I've provided a written report for you this evening, a little bit different this, this month, but prior to speaking to that written report, I'm actually gonna ask Senior Dean Bob VanderVeld, who has served in a lead capacity implementing Cleared4, that's our, the product that we're using to implement the vaccine requirement, to provide a brief update to you on the implementation of that requirement, both for employees and for students as it's been going into effect over these last weeks.
Thank you, Dr. Parker and members of the board. If we can go to the next slide. As board members, because you receive a check from the district for your service, albeit a small one, you have been sent your information about submitting your vaccination information as an employee of the district. And so you know that we are using a system called Cleared4 for managing the documentation of vaccination and any required testing. It is a system that is in use across the country. It's used by many California community colleges and as noted here, it's also used by the NFL. And so this week, if it's good for the 49ers, it's good for us as well. This system has been in place since November. We have our, 100% of our administrators in confidential and now updated to 99% of our faculty with a few of our part-time faculty returning from break have submitted their information and are cleared. We have some part-time faculty, mostly clinical sites, that use their email rather than the Napa Valley College email, and so we're having to reach out individually to those folks to collect their information, as well as some of our newly hired temporary hourly workers that come in on a rotating basis during the course of the semester. But in general, the system has worked extremely well for our students and for our employees. If you could go to the next slide, Catherine. With regard to in-person instruction, as you will recall, any class that meets on campus, either fully or as a hybrid class that meets partly on campus, is subject to the vaccination requirement. And I can give you an update as of 5:00 PM this evening, that we actually have 2,480 students who are registered for in-person classes and we have issued 2,346 blue passes or clearance for those students. We have another 57 students who have exemptions that have been processed and we have 40 students who are partially vaccinated and will have to re-enroll in their classes with their instructor's permission once they get their second shot. So it's gone extremely well. I've been very pleased with how that process has been working. We do have a few students who may be dropped from their classes this evening because they have not responded to their request for their information. They've been emailed to their NBC address, to their personal address, if we have it, and to their cell phone address, number via text message as well. So lots of efforts, but there's always some that wait until the last second to comply and we're working with those students individually, on a individual basis through admissions and records. At the same time, the board policy also requires that anybody who is coming onto campus for in-person services is subject to the vaccination requirement. And there, students have to have an account created by staff in the office that they're visiting if they're not already registered for an in-person class. We have 74 staff who are trained to support this process. We are not requiring proof of vaccination for events that are open to the public, basketball games, performances at the Performing Arts Center, et cetera. Students or anyone from the public can come and attend those events, although we are employing social distancing strategies and of course requiring masks for anybody attending any activities indoors. So that is our Cleared4 process. My report to you is that it's going extremely well and to anybody listening here, if you haven't submitted your information yet, please do so immediately. So thank you very much, Dr. Parker and members of the board.
And thank you. So much thanks goes to you, Bob, for the incredible work that you've done to help us with this. I, I'm gonna highlight, just flesh out a bit, some of the things that I've shared with you in, in my written report. The first is about flex day. So today's flex day was really impactful to me. I thanked a number of people there, but I want to do so here as well. I appreciated the engaging and honest conversations that took place. In the morning session, in response to a question about his experience here at NBC, one of the students that was on the panel described what had contributed to his success at NBC with a very simple statement. He said, "I ended up connecting." And I think that this sentence summarizes what we all need and want for our students and for our campus community right now, and Academic Affairs is committed to working on connecting with our campus colleagues. Regarding the second topic of my report, the spring schedule, at a different flex session today, we talked about enrollments. And as I've presented here previously, we've witnessed steady declines at NBC. Kristy rightly noted that these declines predate the pandemic, but have also been exacerbated by the pandemic. The effect of this decline has resulted in a smaller spring schedule, a smaller spring schedule than we've run for many years. And there's some data on this in the written report. The spread of the new variant, these new systems to monitor vaccination status, strong job market, a number of other factors, these are our realities. And as one of the flex attendees noted, we must continue to pursue the strategies that we're pursuing that are effective. And at the same time, we need to be working on longer-term strategies, including addressing technology challenges, while we also engage in, in important conversations about a reset of our enrollment expectations and goals. Finally, I included some, some highlights around our curriculum dual enrollment, educational partnerships and outreach plans. Part of our college strategy, it's one of our strategic goals, is to explore new partnership opportunities. And I believe that this will prove to be one of our best strategies, not only for addressing enrollment, but in meeting our mission to serve the needs of this community. And I will continue to bring updates around the development and outcomes of these efforts in the additional months ahead. I have many of them in my mind right now, but as they, as they develop, I will bring them back and look forward to sharing those with you. Good evening.
Thank you. Was Bob next? Or Doug, sorry?
That's all right. Members of the board, Dr. Frost, I will save my comments for when we get to agenda item 13. I figure by that time you will be tired of hearing me, so I'm not gonna waste your time now. Thank you.
Never tired of hearing you, Doug. But 10-4.
I think Holly was next.
Good evening, trustees, interim president Frost, esteemed colleagues and community members. I did not prepare a visual presentation for you this evening, but I did want to give you a very brief update. We've been focusing many of our efforts on enrollment for spring and beyond. As you've heard from Dr. Parker, we have much work to do to increase enrollment and marketing and communications is just one piece of the puzzle. With the support of state funding for retention and enrollment outreach, we've been able to expand our advertising and marketing efforts. With an investment of just over $4,000, we were able to advertise on Facebook, Instagram and Snapchat and implement a geofence campaign, which is one of those location-based marketing campaigns using Wi-Fi, GPS and cellular data. With this minimal investment, those campaigns resulted in nearly a quarter million impressions, the total number of times that the ads were seen. We saw more than 2,700 clicks on our spring semester landing page on our website and the posts were shared more than 75 times. These numbers may sound small, but in reality, for the investment we made and comparing them to the averages in social media, they're actually quite high. And while our enrollment numbers are down, like all other community colleges, we did see an increase during the time period the ads were running. We'll continue to utilize social media for marketing and we'll also be incorporating direct mail, buses and billboards into the mix as we move forward and also plan for fall. And I am excited to share creative with you at a future meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Holly. Did that conclude the, the president's cabinet reports? Help me out if I'm, if I'm missing somebody. If I, if I might give my brief report.
Dr. Moon Somi, I think, if she has one.
I mentioned her, but I don't see her anymore.
She's. I'm, I'm here. I wasn't planning to present a report. First of all, good evening, members of the board, colleagues, students and members of the public. I will provide a very brief update on priorities for the spring semester in the Office of Diversity, Equity and Inclusion. Beginning this month, we'll be starting the Diversity, Equity and Inclusion colloquia, which is to elevate conversations about diversity, equity and inclusion with members of the Academic Affairs Council, the Student Affairs Council and members of the Academic Senate Executive Leadership Team. We'll be having conversations to flesh out the, a definition of equity that we can agree that will be applicable for our understanding of how we enhance equity at Napa Valley College. In terms of surveying and data collection, we'll be having a survey of students on campus climate. That's expected to begin in February. That'll be conducted by a project at the University of Southern California. They'll be administering the survey for us. Programming, we're going to have a rather full semester. Black History Month begins in February and then there's Women's History Month, Caesar Chavez Day, AAPI Heritage Month, the Mariachi Festival, Cinco de Mayo, Pride Month and Juneteenth. And so the Office of Diversity, Equity and Inclusion will be partnering and collaborating with various departments and centers and units around our campus to enhance that kind of cultural programming. So that concludes my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Moon Somi. I'll, I'll give my remarks briefly if now's a good time for president's report.
Please, Ruston, Frost.
It, it was a long first week, I have to say, but, but invigorating and exciting. I got somebody at my door as I'm beginning my report even. I wanna start with a couple of thank yous. First, I wanted to thank Holly Dawson, just being able to come here and see three articles in the paper that were, you know, just full of good news about the college, you know, told me that our, our public information officer is doing a great job, that the relations she has with the press were visible. I can tell they're getting good information from the college and it's just, I really appreciate being able to start with that kind of good news. At the same time, I see the same kind of enrollment challenges and IT challenges that have been described earlier today. It's been a constant subject in meetings since I've been here and frankly, it's a, it's a big concern of mine. It's a particular concern of mine that our staffing is so low in IT at the same time that, that we're reporting internally that we're overstaffed in other areas. That imbalancing is really gonna take some studying on my part, some learning on my part and some, some ongoing conversations with the administrative leaders particularly, but as a, as a campus dialogue as well. I've asked a lot of questions this week and, you know, begun dialogues on multiple fronts. That, that's for the president, that learning is continuous and folks have been incredibly friendly to me on campus. I like to get out at least once a day just to stretch and walk and clear my head. And the folks who are working on campus have, have been brave and come right up to me, introduced themselves and been, been quick to share their thoughts and ideas. And I have to say overwhelmingly, every person has basically said, "We're glad you're here. Let's get moving. Let's move the college forward. We're, we're, we're with you in this." And you can imagine how, how, how just positive that made me feel and welcomed here at Napa Valley. I want to give the board just a very, very brief housing update. As you know, I had questions about that since I was here last week. Any housing project requires just a focus and a drive to, to keep those projects moving. I spoke with Erin Stagg, our, our legal counsel on this earlier this week, asked her a lot of questions. Long story short, she's going to come before the board for the February meeting and provide a detailed update to the board, so we, we make sure we're driving that project forward. She did, she had the sense that several of the environmental studies that were being done based on the early digs were going to have, we'd have. we're going to have, we'd have results by February. And so we're going to just calendar that for the board's benefit. COVID, of course, has been a conversation every day. That's one of those. I appreciate the board's flexibility in giving me the ability to change course if we need to. It's been tough. But I have to say, the administration, they're committed to just a step-by-step returning to normalized campus life. And I feel like I've been able to support that so far. So, but it is a continuous discussion. And of course, we're monitoring that situation day by day. The two classrooms that were unfinished, those IT projects, I've gotten a commitment to have those done by the end of January. And so I'm very pleased to be able to announce that. I know that was a concern following up from last fall. Daniel Vega and Chris Harder will be working on that and are committed to getting that done for our faculty. I'm not even sure which subject area. I want to say math, but I'm really happy to hear that good news on behalf of our faculty. Additionally, I want to thank Oscar and Charo in particular. I showed up actually four days early just because I really felt like there's so much information that I needed to take in to be prepared for the Monday start. And to their credit, they welcomed me, spent time with me, spent considerable time with me, just helping me get oriented, buried me in reading material. And so I'm especially thankful for just the additional orientation I got from them in the days before my start last week. I want to particularly, one more thanks, and I, well, actually, two more items. I've worked with a lot of CBOs, chief business officers in California, either at colleges or through the State Administrator Association. And I think you all know how lucky you are to have Doug Roberts here. You know, Doug's the kind of guy I wished for in several of my rural college assignments, but could never get someone of his caliber to travel that far to help us out. So you guys are really fortunate to have the benefit of his expertise. I'm fortunate to have the benefit of his expertise. And so Doug, I'm really appreciative of your time here, and I know it's drawing to a close rapidly. So thank you for, and I look forward to your report tonight as well. Finally, I've been able to meet with students, student groups twice this week so far. And so David Gonzalez and I and Mr. Texan Marcus, right? We've already met twice in meetings and had some good dialogue. Frankly, the students gave, challenged me with some questions. One of the first ones was, what is your goal for the college this year? And it was unexpected to get that direct question so quick. But I'm committed to spending time with our student leaders and learning from them. I want to make sure I visit the Upper Valley Campus soon and be able to engage with students in multiple locations, meet students where they are, and whether it's virtual or face-to-face. I look forward to that because frankly, that's a big part of this job too. So I think the last thing I want to just add is I appreciate the comments about our enrollment concerns. From what I can tell, the enrollment drop has been fairly continuous over almost 10 years. And so I think it's important that folks here today understand the decrease in enrollments is not about any one person here, but it's something we can't allow to continue. And so we've got to make that one of our highest priorities. It's got to be more than a conversation. And so what Dr. Parker is describing, what others are describing, it's music to my ears to hear the focus that's already on this challenge because despite the demographics, despite the drop in high school graduation rates, despite the drop in birth rates, we've got to look at ways of restoring some of our enrollment to secure our future. So I just appreciate the conversation. I want you all to know I'm listening. I'm very aware of what's going on. So long report tonight, but it was a big first week. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Frost. We'll love to give the board members an opportunity to ask any questions if there is any follow-up. But I think we also have a report from Student Affairs and Robin Darkangelo. I don't know if she had one piece, I think.
I'm sorry, Robin.
No, no, I neglected to get that.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Well, good evening, Board President Dodd, Board of Trustee members, and interim president Dr. Frost. I'm happy to share information about the new student convocation at NBC this evening. The new student convocation was recreated as a response to the need identified by student focus groups carried out during spring 2020. The focus group consisted of a diverse group of students from ASNBC, Amosia, veterans, foster youth, LGBTQ+, and students of color, including Filipinics and Latinx. Through in-person meetings, discussions, and surveys, we were able to identify a reoccurring theme of challenges to access services. And moreover, the majority of student participants were unaware of the resources available to them at NBC. This academic year marks our second annual new student convocation. Convocation is typically offered at universities across the country to inform and welcome new incoming students. NBC holds a large event in the fall for new incoming students and offers a smaller event for new students starting in spring. Students who attend the convocation are provided information about all of the student support services available at NBC, thus helping them to prepare for the academic journey with the college. The presenters include a diverse group of administrators, counselors, faculty, staff, and students who present on their department or experience. Students receive a $100 bookstore voucher and several other gifts and wrap-up prizes for their participation. The convocation event also provides the students with a website that was specifically designed to help them navigate the various resources and services. We expanded the new student convocation in fall 2021 to include student affairs, breakout sessions, and Dr. Sarah Parker spoke about featured programs and learning communities in Academic Affairs. We have also added the student voice this year. We plan to collaborate with Academic Affairs and highlight additional programs next year. The new student convocation has proven to be a successful event. Analysis of the student persistence at the end of the fall 2020 semester reflected that 91.5% of the students who attended the convocation completed their semester successfully in comparison to 82.6% successful completion for the students who did not participate. The fall 2021 semester reflects 96% of the student attendees were retained for the entire semester. Comparatively, the institution retained 93% of the students during the same semester. So with that, the Student Affairs team is looking forward to collaborating with students, Academic Affairs, and other partners again to build on the success of the previous events. I want to sincerely thank all of the collaborators who worked behind the scenes to make this a success, especially noted Chris Farmer and his team Camino Sallexito and Maria Ramos Tamayo in the Office of Student Affairs. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Does any board members have any follow-up questions or thoughts? To share? And Dr. Frost, typically, I mean, I think when we've done that in the past, as board members will, you know, ask questions as they arise. I mean, something that's really highlighted in my mind, I don't mean to talk too much here, is obviously the declining enrollment numbers, which a few of our colleagues have touched on tonight. I'm just curious, I'm not sure if it's a question for Robin, for you, or for Sarah, or just maybe anything that was discussed. I mean, I think Kristi Uemoto mentioned that, you know, and a few other folks have echoed that enrollment was already declining before the pandemic. And obviously, as, you know, it's been magnified since the pandemic occurred. But if we're talking about enrollments down this year or this semester, 19%, 15%, I think in those numbers, I guess if there was a primary, pandemic is certainly a big reason for that, at least, you know, over the past two years. But what do we think about the thought is, or any of our academics speak, the cause for that, there's a second reason for that enrollment? There's obviously lots of things going on in students' lives, but I'm just trying to think about what other things can we point to? And it's clearly, we're doing a lot of outreach. Our dual enrollment is significantly up, meaning our outreach to, you know, our local high schools is wonderful. And I know the breakfast that Student Affairs puts on, I mean, there's a lot of meaningful outreach there. I'm just trying to think, what more can we do? Or what are we thinking is the biggest issue out there outside of the pandemic?
Thank you, trustee Dodd. Let me make a couple of comments, and then I want to give Dr. Parker an opportunity to maybe share some thoughts on this too. I'm going to, folks, I'm a short-term interim president. And so I'm going to be, you're going to find me hard-hitting, pretty direct. There's only so much time. And so I want to be really clear with you. When I see, have an observation, I'm going to share it very directly. When you have a 10-year enrollment decline, it's more than one thing. I agree completely with Dr. Parker that the last couple of years, yes, are largely pandemic determined. But there are other reasons beyond that. We heard another reason just tonight. So it's easy for me to point it out. We're underhired in IT. We don't have the support we need in IT. And you know what? I haven't been here long enough to know if we're missing some of the bolt-on programs that will help our technology work better for us. But I've seen this at two other community colleges. When your technology is not working for you, you risk losing students. It can be online, it can be very easy to take a couple of online courses somewhere else if your technology is not responsive enough to keep students already here. So I want to problematize it a little bit and discuss some of the additional elements associated with this. I don't think this is about student services. And I sure don't think it's about the quality of our faculty. But I do think we might be understaffed in areas that really require, we need to strengthen to retain the students we have. Our numbers overall, in terms of the students who are here, our retention, our persistence, our transfer rates, I mean, they're impressive. This is a strong teaching college. We have a lot to celebrate. You know, there's where, okay, how do we get that message out better? I can tell you, and I'll say one more thing, Dr. Parker, and then I'll turn it over to you. I can tell you as someone who has, was at a Chaffee College for a year, Chaffee and several other colleges like Chaffee in the South, they are very aggressively putting their programs on the statewide exchange. And they're doing everything they can to, well, increase their market share. Community colleges are no longer operating purely within their districts. They're becoming statewide colleges. We've got to be able to design programs that both respond to our local needs but also are open to students at a statewide level. We'll be extremely competitive statewide, but I'm too new to know how competitive we are now. I do know that we are probably losing students to other colleges that are already competing statewide. And, but I'll leave, I'm sure Dr. Parker knows more about that than I do right now. So maybe that sets you up for response, Sarah. Thank you.
You've laid out so many really excellent pieces of the response, starting with, it's always going to be a variety of factors. And I've been working, you know, as soon as I got here to really try to understand the local community, the context, the changing demographics, the changing needs of the community. The session that we had today, it was really, it was inspiring because Chris Farmer and I, who presented the session on enrollment trends together, we posted this question to the group. And collectively, people have a lot of good insight as to the variables contributing to this challenge. The online environment for students, a strong labor market that operates inversely to enrollment at community colleges, and the very real challenges for our students, the local changing demographics, the increased costs locally, the changing labor market needs of this community, and then shifts in the students that we have been serving historically to the students we are serving now. But then what does that create in terms of new opportunities and new markets of potential students that we can go after? So some of the things that we've been talking about in addition to the partnerships that I referenced earlier are more short-term programs to prepare students for careers, our non-credit, growing our non-credit programming to respond to those changing demographics and other needs, especially as a community-supported district. And then, you know, thinking about who we are and what we want to be. I think that this is the moment to start to have that conversation. And it's hard to have that conversation, but it's also exciting. And there's a moment here, you know, our educational master plan is coming up around a decade old. So this is good timing for that. And another session that we had today was intended to set the groundwork for starting to have those conversations on campus around that possibility, you know, what we're going to become. I received an email after the session that we held on enrollment, and it said that, you know, it's exciting to think about identifying a new focused identity, unity around some collective rallying points, purpose-driving momentum, and that purpose permitting the decisions across the campus. I think that's what we're going to be working towards. I know I'm getting a little philosophical here and moving away from enrollment, but what is our college going to be? Who are we going to be focusing on? And how can we put the pieces in place that we need to accomplish that vision? I think Dr. Frost was also speaking to that, so thank you. That session was also recorded, so I would be happy to share it with you if you'd like to hear what so many of my colleagues had to say about this really timely question.
I was going to ask that exact thing, Dr. Parker, because that'd be really, I think, helpful for the board just to see. No, I mean, no particular hurry when you have a moment. And, you know, if you did, if they did keep a list, or as presenters, you guys kept a list of those, I think that would be really good for the board to see and just be thoughtful of it. And philosophical is fine. It's good to reflect on the big picture, big picture stuff too. Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions?
I just have one, and I don't want to get too far into the weeds because I know we've heard a lot about IT. But the IT factor in how it pertains to enrollment, is there, I hate to say, short-term fix? But what is it that we could actually do now to help, you know, with enrollment in terms of IT?
I'm happy to respond on some of the things that I know and others will know even more. One of the things that I've heard since I've got here is the challenges that individuals have with the enrollment process. So we do have these outreach and retention funds from the state, which are really necessary and needed. So we've received bids from consultants to help us evaluate that process. And Dean Jessica Erickson is moving forward with that immediately right now this semester in hopes to have that, those set of recommendations and improvements addressed before the website is launched, which is also set for the spring. That's a piece of it. I think that Holly can speak more to the website, but we know that this is where students get their information. And we know that we've been waiting a long time for that new website to launch and that that will help with the navigation. Other pieces around IT, I can't speak to, but others may be able to.
No, and those are good comments. And I don't want to get us too distracted from the board agenda right now. But to Dr. Parker's point about the website, I've already communicated with both Holly's office and IT and given direction to transfer the rights to the website management. management to Holly's area. Those discussions began before I was here, but they've kind of sat without that decision for, for several months, which really hindered the Public Information Office's ability to update the website and improve some of those, those broken connections. And so I, I gave that direction several days ago, but I also told IT specifically this week and next week, your number one focus is making sure students stay connected. We had the, the email servers went down, I think it was in, maybe in December before I even got here, but that, that disconnected students and every time we have to, every time we lose that connectivity and then spend days bringing it back up, we potentially lose our students, our customers. And so it's that reliability that, that, that I really focused on in my remarks that frankly, we've over hired in some areas and we've under hired in others and IT really needs attention in that area. There's other areas too, but I, I just chose to focus on IT tonight because of the disconnectivity that others have reported and that I agree with frankly.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone. Also focusing on bolstering our IT support, but then also retention as well is a good piece that we should be not forget about as well too and with our IT staff who are, who need all the support they can get right now. Great, so, you know, in terms of moving on to the next item, 10.2 is something fun, much fun, is a recognition of our, our former chair, Jennifer Baker. And Jennifer, we do have a resolution for you, but just, I think this is the purpose of this is really showing our appreciation for all the work and service you gave and how dedicated you were in all your years of serving as a, as a trustee, but particularly last year where there was quite a bit of stuff going on. And, you know, I, we have a resolution which, you know, I'd like to read and then ultimately the board to go over and, and, and vote on, but I just was thinking about, I think it was the foundation, maybe a holiday party or something like that where your, where your son suggested that, you know, asked where your office was because you were spending at the, at the college campus because you were spending so much time doing all the, all the college work as, as board chair, which I, I thought was, was pretty funny, how he picked up how, how dedicated you were over the past year to the college. So, you know, quickly highlighting some of the, the recitals in the, in the resolution is, you know, whereas Jennifer Baker has served as president of the board, her professional and passionate demeanor fostered inclusivity for all college constituent groups and Napa Valley college members. And Jennifer has always appreciated and recognized the work and concerns of others identified points of pride and inspired students and colleagues to reach for their goals. She's a close member of the campus family, not the least through her participation in numerous campus activities, ceremonies, events, projects, Zoom calls, Zoom calls, Zoom calls, you name it. And now therefore be it resolved on behalf of the college and the community, we'd like to thank you, Jennifer, for your tremendous services as board chair and president last year. And Catherine, I guess, do we, do we have any, any public comment? Seeing none and we also do want, yeah, well, thank you, thank you, thank you, trustee Baldini.
I'll second trustee Iverson.
Thank you, trustee Iverson. Trustee Deluna?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Absolutely.
Trustee Rios?
Aye.
Trustee Baldini?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Student trustee Soto Gonzalez?
Aye and thank you.
Trustee Iverson?
Aye, thank you.
And I will vote yes as well for not giving Jennifer a vote in that matter. We do have, we do have a special.
Be wise.
We do have, I don't know, Jennifer, throwing a gavel your way?
I do, I got it, I have it and I, I was actually joking a couple of months ago that it would have been more appropriate if I'd received a mouse since I never actually got to use one of these. So, but it's very pretty and I, I now I have an office to put it in, so great, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jennifer, for item 10.3, appointment of trustees to board committees. So we have, you know, kind of three standing committees and a couple of ad hoc and certain campus committees. The three standing committees are ledge affairs, audit and finance, and real property. Thinking about and talking with some folks and if you have a couple of the trustees, it decided I think best not to fill and the legislative committee this year. I spoke with Holly, who's been basically our ad hoc legislative liaison to Sacramento and I think she thought it was a good idea as well, I think just from an administrative standpoint and an opportunity to, I think, best inform the entire board when we have important pieces of, of legislation and developments up in Sacramento that the board should, you know, be thinking about and taking action on and we can just do that as, as a, as a full board together. So, you know, like I said, I think that that would be a good idea and of course, you know, if it turns out that we need to, to change that, we can always appoint an ad hoc committee to address that or just reinstate and bring back the Legislative Affairs Committee. So, you know, throughout the year, just let me know if you guys think that that's, that's appropriate. But for audit and finance, actually gonna go with the same and for, that we had last year was Rios, Baker and myself. For real property, Rios, trustee Goff and trustee Iverson. For our McPherson distinguished teaching award selection committee was putting trustee Goff up for that position as well and continuing in that same fashion with the, our Dr. Ed Shank Student Affairs Award Selection Committee is trustee Deluna. And our accreditation steering committee, again, I think just the work that she did last year and continuing on with that, you know, institutional knowledge that she developed last year as trustee Deluna. And Catherine, any, any public comment on our, on our, our board appointments?
No, I haven't received any public comment on this.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't think we need to necessarily take a vote. I think these are a discretion, but I think it would be good if, if any board members do have any comments, I'll just welcome a motion.
Actually, I did not have this as an action item you're appointing. The next three items are action items and they will take a vote on that.
Great, okay, well, then I just maybe I'll just take it by consensus since we don't have, and seen, is there, is there any comments or seen, seen none, seen a lot of thumbs up, I'll just move forward and adopt it by, even though it's not an action item, I think for my own, my own benefit. Thank you. But so like, so we have three similar appointments for DOS, District Auxiliary Services Foundation, but trustee Baldini, I've nominated and would appreciate a motion to appoint trustee Baldini to DOS.
Your approval?
Second.
Trustee Deluna, can you vote, please?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Rios?
Aye.
Trustee Baldini?
Aye.
Student trustee Soto Gonzalez?
Aye.
Trustee Baker?
Aye.
Good, I heard a trustee Baker, yes, and I'll vote aye as well. Absolutely, no, thank you, Michael, for, for stepping up to do that. For our trustee appointee for the foundation board, I'd like Kyle, trustee Kyle Iverson to continue on that and appreciate a, a motion.
I'll move.
I moved. Second, Enos.
Thank you. Trustee Deluna, how do you vote?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Rios?
Aye.
Baldini?
Aye.
Soto Gonzalez?
Aye.
Baker?
Aye.
Iverson?
Aye.
And I will vote aye as well.
Trustee Dodd, you skipped over VWT Foundation. Could you also remind me who was the motion and second on that?
I have a Deluna for a second and.
Trustee Goff. Thank you, okay, so back up to VWT Foundation?
Some say skipping, some say just rearranging the order of why we're doing these appointments. For our, our VWT Foundation Board appointee, I'd ask the board to appoint trustee Baldini.
I'll move. Second.
Thank you, from Deluna, motion and Baker with a second. And Deluna, thank you. Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Rios?
Aye.
Trustee Baldini?
Aye.
Student trustee Soto Gonzalez?
Aye.
Trustee Baker?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson?
Aye.
And I will vote aye as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next item is also an action item as well and going over the board goals and speaking with our vice president, trustee Iverson, reflecting back on our ad hoc committee that was put together last year with trustees Deluna and Baldini to go over some of these goals, which they put together, I think, really with trustee Iverson leading the helm and Kyle, I'll kick it off to you, if that's okay, to kind of go over and, you know, while it's an action item tonight, I think, you know, we've been seeing, having heard a lot of information tonight, you know, this is definitely a discussion and I think more than open to, you know, getting some comments. I think this will be helpful too for Dr. Frost to, even if we're not able to produce in this exact language tonight, is at least kind of giving some direction where we're headed or where we'd like to head over this next year and certainly, you know, over the next six, six months, four to six months while, while President Frost is, is here.
Yeah, so I'll just jump in and these were really just to get something done. I know with everything that's happened recently, we had the, the board had to pivot with, you know, the hiring of the interim, the FICMAT accreditation, everything that's going on with the district right now, also the presidential search. So I wanted to get something just on the board for us and it didn't give the committee a lot of time to look at it. So I'm hoping these would just, the whole goal of these would be very short-term, just to get us through really for accreditation purposes. So I'm curious at what everybody's feedback is and if we could just move forward with these.
Yeah, I'll go in, in order, trustee Goff and then trustee Baker can, can follow.
Okay, I just had a comment on goal, go, goal number four, board of trustee members will conduct training. Do you mean participate in training or attend training?
Well, like our CCLC workshops and the other training, that opportunities that came up, I think Dr. Frost has ideas possibly for some extra training for us, but.
Right, so this is training we'd be attending, not putting on.
Maybe complete training? Is that the wrong word?
Yeah, just conduct probably isn't appropriate.
So yeah, board of trustees members will attend or participate in training, correct?
That works.
That probably the auto spell check went from complete to conduct.
Yeah, so I'm like, I just wanted to be clear because I looked at that and went, I'm not going to train anybody. I would go to that certainly, but I don't feel comfortable training, so just want to make clear. Thank you.
Fully noted.
Trustee Baker?
Yes, I wondered about if we could expand on goal number two a bit and, and include the review of the college values, mission and vision, since I know that's something that was discussed as, as a part of accreditation anyway, and it seems like it would be a good fit to squish that in there with our new president. So we would hire and retain a permanent superintendent president and then work with that individual to review and establish new goals or something rather for the, for the district as a whole. So that was, and then I also wondered if we wanted to include, and I know that it's, it sounds like the idea is to do this as more of a one-year goal than, rather than two years, but I'm wondering if we wanted to include something in here that addresses DEI since that is something that has been such a, a big focus over the last year and has also been a really big piece of our hiring process.
And that actually is something that trustee Deluna had brought up too and really the goal was one-year timeframe, so I think both of those are great ideas and I'm fine adding them, I just, we needed to get something for the, the time being, so.
And I honestly don't know what the verbiage would be on a DEI and what that might look like. If it's something that trustee Deluna maybe already has a draft that we could plug it in number five, that would be easier, if we wanted to bring that back or, but I, I do think that if we could bring, if we could pull in the, kind of the, the vision and mission piece of it, I think that we could even just make that a priority as we are doing that work.
And potentially the nice thing about including the mission and vision review and Robin Warnall will have better sense of this, but with your evaluation this year, that might be really good timing as a, as a reset going into your next seven-year cycle, I think it is now.
Trustee Goff, were you, were you gonna ask about the DEI policy? Was this something new? I just, oh, you're on mute.
You're muted.
Darn it. I, I was saying, I'm wondering if the DEI should be put in with our mission and vision, not as a separate thing, but it should really be part of, of what we do with everything, right? So to make it a separate goal doesn't really make sense to me. I think it should be part of that mission and vision that we're going to establish with the new permanent superintendent president. It just makes sense to put it in there instead of having a separate goal.
Trustee Deluna?
So I had kind of thought about this as more of a very short-term board goals where we would revisit this, well, this document once we have a new superintendent, because I think we, once we have the new superintendent, our board goals really should be reevaluated depending on what our focus is going to be after they're, they're in office. And, and definitely I, you know, I, I would love to have a DEI message in here, but I, I would also like to make it clear that this will be revisited before the, the end of, you know, this calendar year, but definitely by the time we, or when, once we have a new superintendent, permanent superintendent in office. And I do, you know, I would hope that we would, we would work on the mission, the vision, revisit our strategic plan and, you know, everything else that we need to do in order to have a successful new term for our new president.
Thank you. I guess just closing a thought on the, on, on adding the DEI, I mean, I think what trustee Goff said, it makes sense to me about in terms of adding as the mission and, and vision. I kind of, I look at goals as something that we could point to and for the previous year and saying, yes, we did that, we can check that off the list or we can say we, we made an attempt and let's keep that on the list. So I just, I'm not saying that we shouldn't add any sort of, you know, a goal regarding DEI, but I think it would be helpful for, I don't know, trustee Baker, trustee Deluna, if you guys have a specific goal in terms of what you'd like to see with respect to PR efforts towards diversity, equity and inclusion that, you know, you guys could maybe formulate some language in terms of a, a direction to head in. Trustee Deluna, I see your hand up again.
Oh, I, I already have some language that we can use, so I'm happy to share that with trustee Iverson and trustee Baldini if they want to look at it and then we can bring this, this back next month. next month.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. And I see trustee Rios, please.
Yeah, I just, um, I don't see why we can't have a fifth one in here that deals, you know, with the, the mission, the vision, and, you know, work in the DEI into that fifth goal. Sure, this is set out as one year, but why couldn't we put it on here and it's just going to continue on? Uh, we can revise it, you know, at the end of this year or, you know, continue it as it, uh, as it is. Uh, but I don't see why it couldn't go on here now.
I, I think that's a, a, a very good idea in terms of direction. Um, so I, yeah, I agree, I agree with that. Um, does anyone have any other comment? I, I have some comments in terms of maybe a, a different uh, board goal to add, um, or maybe update one of the existing ones. Um, any other trustees? Uh, trustee Rios, do you still have your hand up?
Not anymore.
Okay, thanks. Trustee Baldini?
Yes, just to the point that, that given the term and I agree on either in the July board meeting or June board meeting or board retreat that we revisit these and make a, make a statement to that. Uh, we, we say it in the first paragraph, but just to reiterate it. And then we, we um, uh, look at February with the language that trustee uh, Deluna has and add number five, but approve the four right now. We're, 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 we're five months there and I, I'd say we plant the flag on these four right now and then add that fifth next month after, after we have a chance to review it. So these, these are all very important. I think we get started now. We've waited too long to, to get to these. Um.
Right.
I would make a motion for that. Make a motion that we go ahead and approve the four.
Well, if, if, if I could, if I, if I could just in terms of just getting some direction in terms of, I mean, one thing I think that was just emitted from here, you know, and maybe it shouldn't be a bit for a lot of comments and, and maybe this is just, we've received a lot of it tonight, but it's been consistent over the past year, perhaps a little longer, is just addressing our, our IT infrastructure. Um, and I just think if we're not adding that to the list, uh, tell me where, where, where does that go and where, where should our focus go? And I'll leave it at that, but Dr. Frost, please.
Well, and just perhaps this is an appropriate place to, to share this. I, I know the league has very specific, not, not specific language that should be adopted, but they have developed specific language for boards to review and consider in association with policy and procedure. I want to separate that from when we start to talk about our mission and vision statements. Those, those are board-driven, but of course, that's, that's also becomes a, a college community dialogue too. And so I, I'm not suggesting what you do. I just want to make sure your, 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 your goal is described in such a way that I, I understand your direction. And, and by the way, with the league language, we'll help with that just share, just by sharing it with you for your, for your deliberation.
Thank you. Uh, trustee Baker?
Yeah, um, trustee Dodd, I just wanted to um, put out there that I, I really like the idea of including some of, again, some of the stuff that we've been talking about a long time, the IT, but I wondered if we wanted to maybe even go a little bit broader and, and have something that addresses enrollment specifically. And then I, you know, the issues surrounding IT would just be a tactic um, to achieving that goal. Um, because then we could, you know, I don't know if that makes it too broad or, or not.
From my personal perspective, is it, um, it doesn't make it necessarily too broad. It just doesn't narrow enough into the, the issue that I think we're trying to, to address. I mean, in terms of just overall IT, I mean, because we've had issues with just emails, receiving, receiving emails and that has, you know, maybe that, it certainly does have an issue to do with the, you know, can relate to student enrollment, but um, you know, I think those are things that may be more indirectly impacting enrollment. But I, and I also agree on, on the, um, you know, a focus on en- enrollment efforts as well. Um, which I know the, our, everybody is, is very focused on our, already, but uh, any thoughts, I guess, on the IT? Um, incorporating that somehow?
Hmm, all of these are great ideas and they all could be goals in of themselves or added to this, so. I do like trustee Baldini's idea about getting something done just for the, the sake and then bringing back another one if that works, but.
Yeah, I, I don't think, I think with the direction, I, I'm hearing a lot of consensus on what we have uh, before us. Maybe, you know, uh, narrowing in some of the language and, and so on, but I think I, I haven't heard any, any negative comments about going in a direction, a different direction with any of the, the four policies before us. Um, and I've also heard, um, you know, thoughts and suggestions from, in particular, I think trustee Deluna will take the lead on drafting something. Um, you know, something with the, the board can focus on in relation to uh, DEI um, policies. Um, but I think this is a really, it is uh, important, I think, for me and us also just so we give Dr. Frost to the, the, the direction we need and we can finalize it, uh, you know, in, in our February, February meeting, but I don't see any reason why, uh, not approving, uh, wait until February to approve it. I don't think it makes these goals and, you know, the discussion that we've had here any less valuable.
So you want a motion or not? I'm kind of.
Um, no, I think we got, you know, I don't think, does the board, is the board okay with this for it? Or would it like to add? I think that, that's where I, I didn't hear anything on the, on IT and I'm fine if I'm the, 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 and if the board thinks that's inappropriate. I think that's what if I could get a thumbs up in terms of direction. I think my inclination is not to approve anything tonight, but to take this back. So I'd like, I think I've got good direction um, on, and Dr. Frost has great direction on um, a DEI goal. So I can feel comfortable in that. I don't feel like I have good direction on um, IT. Um, and I don't feel like I have, I think, good direction on enrollment. Uh, trustee Baker, in terms of what, what, what you've added there.
Well, the main thing, my main, my main um, thing about IT is not that it's not a um, priority. It's definitely a priority. I'm just not certain how it sits in terms of a board goal, because there's not a whole lot we can do other than just say, fix it. Um, but you know, it, it, that's why I was thinking maybe if we broadened it a little bit in terms of just enrollment and retention in general and try, that, that then IT would fold naturally into that along with some other efforts as well. But um, you know, I, I, everybody's aware that it's an issue, so I don't think that it's not going to get addressed. It's just, um, it's just where does it belong on our radar?
So I, I can give you, I think it's a really helpful comment. I can give you, I think, what I was thinking and some more specific pieces is uh, supporting our existing IT staff in terms of retention, increasing our IT resources in terms of our onsite support, uh, increasing opportunities for potential off-site support, um, as may be needed through, you know, a third-party consultant. Um, understanding valuation of our, our, our networking and our systems, our current, you know, how we take in um, work orders. I think there was, and Christie Uomo to mention some things, like we didn't even know in terms of, we had it sent, submitted a work order and we didn't even know who, who was operating it. So I think, you know, in terms of just our uh, our, our systems and how, you know, there's work orders, issues and calls for issue. I, I just don't think we have a good sense of that too. Um, and so this isn't something that I think we're going to do, but this is something that we're giving direction to Dr. Frost and, and Dr. Frost's successor um, to, to take on and start thinking about. It's not going to be something that we're going to be able to do tomorrow, but this is, you know, a, you know, probably an annual goal and looking on in the future. Uh, trustee Iverson?
Uh, I, I like that. I think that's specific. I think having, and I think that goes in with the presidential goals too. So I think I'm, I think it's a good idea to add both of those. I support that and we can, I think that's pretty easy and that aligns kind of a possibly presidential goals moving forward. So I think we have good direction, so I'm good either way. I'm glad we have something right now.
And, and thank you trustee Iverson for, for taking the lead on that. I, I think we all, we all appreciate that very much. Okay, well, I, I don't see any other hands raised. Um, and if it's okay, I think, like, I can assure you that Dr. Frost has some very good direction in terms of uh, you know, these, these board goals right now, but let's just further refine it, uh, add in in terms of the, the IT and DEI um, goals that we want to add and, and, and put those out there for board review and I expect us to approve it in February. Um, seem a little lost here. Okay, um, terms of, oh, action item for 10.8. This is our, our CCCT uh, board nomination and uh, trustee Deluna, God bless your heart, has thrown her uh, her hat into the ring. And just to, just to confirm, I want to be sure, uh, is there any other trustees uh, to, to also? Uh, I didn't hear any who was submitted out a, an email. I know Catherine sent out an email for any other folks interested. Um, brave enough, I should say. If not, trustee Baldini?
I wholeheartedly support trustee Deluna in this endeavor.
Okay, I'll do quickly just to take it, taking any public comment. Catherine, do we have any public comment on this? And thank you trustee Baldini.
Sorry. Uh, no, I see no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Well, I'll take trustee Baldini's motion and uh, I believe trustee Iverson's second. And I'll uh, do a roll call. Trustee Deluna?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Rios?
Aye.
Trustee Baldini?
Aye.
Student trustee Soto Gonzalez?
Aye.
Trustee Baker?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson?
And, and I wish you the best. It, it really would be nice to get representation on the, you know, up here in Northern California, so.
I was going to say, be careful what you wish for.
Yeah.
I agree. I looked at the roster and it looks, yeah, very um, yeah, very not, very much not representative, so.
No, not at all.
I'm looking forward to it.
I will vote aye as well. And just to echo trustee Iverson's comment, I think for us trustees that are heading up to Sacramento to the CCLC conference at the end of the month, I think we would love to support you trustee Deluna in terms of just networking and politicking and, and so on, grabbing other trustees' business cards to see what, you know, kind of votes that we can get. And so let's uh, let's huddle at some point about that and at best, you know, plan of attack to get, to get you on there. I think it would be wonderful. I know it's a big commitment, which you know it is, and but you're certainly up to the task and I would love it be, I think it'd be really cool to get you, get you on there.
Thank you.
Um, so moving on to uh, the consent uh, calendar. Um, Catherine, do we have any uh, public comments on any consent items?
Uh, no, I see no public comment and I have received none.
Right. Well, I'll uh, would welcome a motion.
For approval of the consent calendar 12, 12.1 to 12.11, excuse me, uh, in its entirety.
Thank you trustee Baldini. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second.
That trustee Baker, I think, for a second. Um, thank you. Uh, trustee Deluna, how do you vote?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Rios?
Aye.
Trustee Baldini?
Aye.
Student trustee Soto Gonzalez?
Aye.
Trustee Baker?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson? Is that a, a yes? Trustee Iverson?
Yes.
All right, thank you. And I'll vote aye as well. And moving on to item 13, uh, an information item, uh, 13.1, discussion of uh, unrestricted general fund, operating fund 11 uh, for 21, 22, revenue and expenditure update. Dr. Frost?
Um, actually, that's my item.
Okay.
I think.
Yeah, I'm referring to Doug Roberts for this item. That, I would do that as well every time.
Well, thank you so much. Members of the board, uh, President Frost and meeting attendees, um, one of the things that uh, we are doing to, to improve the, the um, information that is presented, you know, to the board and to the overall community with regards to our financial situation is to present a monthly review of our operating fund. Um, hopefully we'll, we will extend that to some of our uh, minor funds, but right now we're still working to uh, get our, our operating fund um, dialed in completely. One of the things that we're doing that's a change is looking at the prior year audit amounts, looking at the year-to-date amount as compared to the year-to-date amount for the previous year, uh, and then comparing the final budget to the um, the, the um, adjusted budget and then a projection to, towards year end and, and what that variance is going to be. Um, if it's all right with you, I would like to share the screen. And do you want to continue? And if I can, oh Lord, why is it I can't find the stuff when I want it? Hmm. Oh, hold on.
I can open your document.
Yeah, if you can, if you can open that, that document, that would be a big help. Thank you.
Okay.
And I apologize for that if we can make that a little bit bigger. Um, first, I, I just want to um, you know, go, go through, through the columns. You can see we have the two, two uh, columns that show the audited uh, financials for uh, 2019 and 2020. The uh, columns that are in, in blue and gold, yes, I am a Cal graduate. Um, that shows the year-to-date expenditure as of the uh, end of December for 2020 and for our current year of 12, 31, 21. And we'll look at some of the numbers in particular. The next column over is our uh, the final budget that was adopted in September. Um, at, at the end of November, we looked at the um, expenditures to date and using annualizers, uh, developed a revised budget that was approved by the board. And currently, again, using annualizers as of the end of December, when I have put together a projection of what our expenditures are our most likely, our revenues and expenditures most likely to be for the end of the year and what that projected variance is. Now, for the revenues, I'm pretty good, I'm pretty convinced of, of the uh, calculations that are used in coming up with, with the adjusted numbers and so there is no variance from the projection. However, if we scroll down a little bit and Catherine, if you can make that a little, just a tad, tad larger. I would say you can look at, at, you know, for our revenues, um, you know, currently we're right around, you know, 45 million dollars and there wasn't a huge change between the final budget and the budget that we are showing as an adjusted budget for 21, 22. Uh, moving down to, to the expenditures, um, you know, our salaries um, are pretty much uh, in line with our expenditures um, this point last year. They're a little bit higher, but then we, we did increase, you know, the, the salaries for um, our classified and our, our faculty. Um, you know, employee benefits, of course, those are going to be somewhat in line with, with our overall uh, salaries and benefits. And then going down to, and again, you can see that, that our expenditures to date are fairly close to, to, to what our, for employee benefits, where we were this time last year. Uh, moving on to, to our books and, and supplies, again, very close. There's a slight variation of where our expenditures may, uh, are currently projected a little bit higher than, than what we currently have budgeted, but not by much. Again, um, this will, this is, is always going to be moving a little bit from month to month as we're using annualizers and uh, I will be um, uh, putting one of these um, reviews and projections forward for the end of, of January for, for the board meeting in February. Moving down to, to the next page, um, looking at some of our other expenditures, again, we're somewhat in line with, with the, you know, where, you know, with our expenditures of, of last year. We're very, very close with regards to the projection and what our adjusted budget was. When we get down to um, where the numbers are, are, are really important and that's kind of the peach-colored numbers, um, it is the increase or decrease in fund balance. Um, and. fund balance. And with the adjusted budget, we looked at an increase to our fund balance about 109,000. As of the projection we have right now, we're looking at about 182,000. And going down to, to the gray numbers, you can see that, that the projection we have right now is a slight increase in our ending fund balance from 7.99% to 8.17%. And again, I will be providing the board this information for the fiscal year through the end of January. So seven months out of the 12, you know, for your review come February. And I'll be happy to answer any questions. And the main reason I start off this, with this particular information is because this provides all of the backup for the information that's going to be presented to you on the very next agenda item.
Thank you, Doug. And does anyone have any questions or comments? And thank you, Doug, for preparing us. It's love to see previous years audits, I, you know, compare it to this. And I love seeing where, how we're tracking too. It's really, really helpful. Haven't seen this before. Trustee Rios?
Yeah, I do have a question. And I'm not sure if this is, this is where this belongs, but where do we track, you know, where does our money for our reserve come from? And where do we track how much was going into that reserve, you know, throughout the year?
Well, our, our reserve is, our reserve is, is equivalent to our, our fund balance. And so, you know, when we, when we talk about reserve, it is generally looked upon as a reserve of total expenditures. So when we say we have a, you know, roughly an 8% reserve, it is 8% in the fund balance as compared to our overall expenditures. So where does that money come from? Well, you start off with the beginning of the year, whatever your fund balance is for the beginning of the year, you add in your revenues, you subtract out your expenditures, and then whatever your fund balance is left, that is your reserve. Now, I do know that other districts do, you know, make some earmarkings and designations of what, of what that fund balance comprises. Sometimes they want to make sure that some of the money is specifically set aside for specific purposes. I can't think of any right now. But then those aren't part of the, the undesignedated unrestricted general fund balance. But that's something that could potentially be contemplated in the future. But right now, given the, the close, you know, the closeness of, of our revenues and expenditures, it's not something that I would recommend at, at the moment.
Okay, because I was, in the past, I guess I've been under the impression when we used to, I remember we used to look at that a little bit more. I always thought, well, we have an account or something where we keep that reserve. But what you've just explained is that, no, we don't. It's just, it's the fund balance. It's what we've got there. So do colleges, and I think this may be what you were kind of explaining, do other colleges actually have an account and take that money and put it aside so that if we say we're supposed to have, you know, a 15% reserve, we actually have that in reserve?
Like a rainy day fund?
Yeah.
Um, what? The, the monies that are in the unrestricted general fund remain in the unrestricted general fund. It's, is just how much of that general fund balance that you designate for your reserve is, is something that's determined by, by the board. It's not something that you can say, we're going to take the money and we're going to put it someplace else. Now, if there are certain things that, that, you know, wish to be funded, such as, you know, a larger contribution to, say, our Section 115 trust for, for funding our other post-employment benefits in the future, well, then you can, you know, send money over to, to such a fund, you know, for such funding purposes. But generally, I'm, I'm, I do not, I'm not an advocate on, on a personal level of taking money and quote unquote, placing it in, 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 in other locales than the fund in which the, the, the monies were, were derived and accumulated. It's kind of mirrors what we've got going on, you know, at the state level, which I'll be talking about that one in just a little, you know, a little bit too.
Dr. Frost?
And I agree with, with Doug on, I mean, you can, I've seen colleges where you, you, you end up with two sets of books. And so we don't advocate for that. At the same time though, Doug, and Doug and I haven't talked about this, so I'm asking it, Doug, as an open question. I, I, I've worked for boards who specifically identified a percentage amount they wanted maintained or retained as reserves year over year. 8%, 12%, 15% even. And that kind of answers Jeff's question about, trustee Dodd's question about a rainy day fund. But maybe you can speak more about, you know, most current practice. It may have evolved since my work there.
Well, if, if, you know, fund balance is, is, is one-time funding. And if, if it's the board's desire to say, okay, out of our quote unquote savings, we are going to always maintain a certain level of quote unquote reserve. You can certainly do that. And that would be in your total fund balance. But then within your fund balance, you could have reserves for, for other items. It's, it's, it's all still within the fund balance. But how you designate it, what, what you call it is, is, is up to, you know, is up to the board. If you were to say, we want to maintain a 5% reserve, then if, as I was, as I would be showing the fund balance, I would say, here is the, you know, the unrestricted fund balance reserve for, you know, economic uncertainty, 5% of expenditures. And then there'd be another line that would say the, you know, unrestricted general fund balance reserve for, or, 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 or unreserved for discretionary use. But it would all still be within the fund balance. It would not be sent to another fund unless there was a specific funding reason why the money would be going to that fund.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I understand what you're, you're explaining. I'm, I'm not sure I'm satisfied with the, the situation.
Well, I'll just, I'll, you know, as Dr. Frost said, and he says he likes, likes to be blunt, I've been, I've been with a couple of districts where, you know, the, the comment that is made is that the district is hiding money. And if we are going, if this and any district is going to have an honest conversation about the finances of the district, then it all needs to be, be open to, to everyone. And basically taking money and setting aside wherever that aside is, I think is, is lacks a little bit of transparency and can only cause trouble.
I certainly was not suggesting hiding money. And I certainly hope you don't take my comments that way. So that was not at all what I was saying.
Well, I just know when people say setting aside money, I, I think I get what, what, what you're talking about.
I mean, aren't we required by the chancellor's office to maintain a reserve?
Yes.
A certain amount?
We have to maintain a minimum of a 5% reserve of expenditures. And what a lot of districts do is they allow their fund balance to be that reserve to whatever percentage they happen to have that particular year. If there is desire to, to quote unquote hard code some of that fund balance specifically as an identified reserve, we can certainly do that. And then whatever fund balance we have above and beyond that specified reserve would be unreserved, unrestricted general fund balance.
Dr. Frost, do you have anything to add? And trustee Baker, I see you just put your hand up as well.
Yeah, and I'll, and I'll be really quick. And I, you know, I think trustee Rios's, questions and comments are spot on at this time. And Doug and I agree on this, I think. Let's, so let's look at it from, from what I would call the board's perspective. You've been watching the college deficit spend for the past three years, and your reserve levels have slowly eroded away. And now you're in a position where you don't have the extra money to, to, to spend when you overspend year to year. That's what we need to fix. If, if the board designates they want a certain amount, a certain percentage amount held in reserve, and, and by the way, it may take three years to build back to that. That's one of the ways the board supervises their employee, is, is they charge that employee with, with achieving a, a, a certain level of fiscal health. And, you know, we, we can't really work through all that tonight. But this is exactly why we have the expertise of a Doug Roberts, because I can dialogue with him and help, help work on that language to make sure we get to your point, trustee Rios.
Thank you.
And I would say that, you know, normally if, in the budgeting process, if there is a stated goal as to what the ending fund balance or what, what a, what a, a reserve goal is for the budget, you know, that can be part of the budgeting, you know, the budgeting process.
All right. Thanks, Doug. Trustee Baker?
Yeah, I was just going to say that we actually did have a goal a few years ago that we were trying to, I think, get to 15%. And we had gotten as high as 11, supposedly. And it had kind of plateaued a bit because our expenses were going up and we weren't adding into it, of course. And then with the most recent audit, it dipped quite a bit after that. So, but we did have somewhere in writing a goal that we wanted to hit 15%, 15%. But I think that, you know, that we were just using the term fund balance and reserve synonymously, that it wasn't just, it wasn't specific to any project or anything like that.
Well, actually, you know, according to, to the CCFS 311 reports for the district, I think back in 14, 15, or 15, 16, the district actually had about a 15%. The fund balance represented an equivalent better than 15% reserve of expenditures. But deficit spending has been going on a number of years. In fact, it is, as, as stated in, in the district's response to ACCJC, one of the factors that will go a long way in addressing the accreditation commission's concern is to make sure that our ongoing expenditures are maintained within our ongoing revenues. Any district that does that generally adds to its fund balance and doesn't have any fiscal problems.
Thanks, Doug. Don't go too far, but I think we, we do, this is an action item. We need the board's approval on this. So Catherine, is there any public comment?
Well, I don't, I don't think.
I don't think it's an action item, is it?
No, not, not the projection of Fund 11. That was, that was just an informational item.
Oh, it is. Correct. Thanks.
The next item coming up is, is the CCFS 311Q. And that is an item that, that requires your, your review and approval.
Thanks, Doug. Go ahead.
That's fine. All right. Catherine, I'll let you put that one up too. And if you can make it a, a little bit larger, this is, this is a report that we were required to, to submit to the chancellor's office, you know, every quarter. A lot of this information, as you can see, looks at some of the actuals from 2018, 19, 19, 20, 20, 21. So this is information that is already loaded into the system. And it's really the fourth column there that looks at our projections for 21, 22. Primarily, those are our projected or the adopted, excuse me, the adjusted budget for 21, 22, as you can scroll down a little bit. And as you can see, row C is very important because the state likes to look at the revenues over expenditures. And as you can see, we're, we're showing $182,000. Although it says the actual of 19, 20 was 67,540. That was based on, on a previously submitted CCFS 311, which was submitted before we had actually closed the books. So I'm not, that year is, is not one that I trust a lot. But you can, you can see, you know, the, where our fund balance is ending up. And, and at the very bottom, or in F.1, it shows what our projected fund balance is going to be. We aren't showing any projected attendance FTS. And the only reason we aren't is because that's information that is input, a system input by the chancellor's office. We don't have that information. And then at the time that this report was being put together, that information had yet, it wasn't due to the state chancellor's office until the 15th. So hopefully, by the, by the time that, you know, we, we run the report and submit it, because it really isn't, isn't due until next month, but we're getting it out early, we'll have that in information. But I think, I think we're looking at about 3,800 to 3,900 FTS as, as the projection. The next line, or the section three is, is our cash balance. As you can see, our, our cash balance was about 17,500,000. But of that, 3,700,000 was the bridging loan that we were given by the county for our November payroll. They, and the money goes back to them in, in January. On that, I, I have had some discussion with the county office of education, and I will be getting in touch with our county treasurer. There is an alternative method where the county can give us credit for our tax revenues. And if they do that, then we wouldn't have any cash flow problems. But as is, we don't, we don't get some of our money that should be ours in November until mid-December or early January. So that's something I'm working on so it's no longer a problem for the district. And go down to the next page. Um, basically, it looks at our revenues and expenditures, you know, to date. Obviously, you're halfway through, through the year. In a perfect world, your revenues will be about 50% of what you're going to receive, and your expenditures are going to be 50% of what you're going to spend. Obviously, we're pretty close based upon our, our revenues, revenue expenditures to date and what we have projected for, for the year. And if you scroll on down, the rest of it is just some information with regards to specific questions they have. They do ask if we have any issues for this year and next year. Primarily, the reason those answers are yes is because the state chancellor's office stresses that we should have, be maintaining at least a minimum 10% reserve over expenditures. And we don't have that for this year. And it may be problematic for us to. And it may be problematic for us to get to that point for next year as well. And that's the CCFS three eleven Q report.
Move approval? Baldini?
Quickly, though, trustee Baldini, Catherine, do we have any public comment? Seeing none, hearing none, seeing no hands raised. I heard a a motion from trustee Baldini. Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Baker with the second. Um, call for a vote. Uh, trustee Deluna?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Rios?
Aye.
Trustee Baldini?
Aye.
Student trustee Soto Gonzalez?
Aye.
Trustee Baker?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson?
Aye. Thank you, Doug.
And I'll go. Aye as well. And have another opportunity to thank Doug again uh for item thirteen point three, state budget update.
All right, this one I do want to share Catherine and hopefully I can get to it from my screen. There we go. Uh, so I hate covering up my screen. There we go. Slide show from the beginning. There we go. Can everybody see that?
Yes. Yes.
All right. Very good. Okay, first, I want to go through some of the elements of the of the governor's budget. Uh, what you're looking at is is an overview of of the um twenty twenty three um budget. You can see with the twenty twenty one, the twenty one twenty two, and then the proposed for twenty two twenty three. Um, of particular interest is the expenditures. As you can see, the the um general fund expenditures for the state are now at two hundred and thirteen billion dollars. And so that means there's a little extra money for, you know, to be distributed. And I did highlight the the BSA. That's the budget stabilization account. The reason that's so important is that uh roughly half of that money is to be used to um stabilize the K through fourteen. And uh ten billion dollars represents about ten percent of the total uh expenditures for the K through fourteen system. So it's uh it's nice to know that that money's there um if and when, you know, the the economy takes a downturn. Okay, for the for the community colleges, the um the total budget for community colleges is about eleven point six billion dollars. And in the budget this year, it provides one point eight billion in proposition ninety eight augmentations over the prior year. As you can see, that uh um a little over half of that money is being given to community colleges as one time. The remainder is coming to us in ongoing monies, but still some very significant amounts coming to community colleges. The community college focus is um is a multi-year roadmap to California's future. Um, in the material that was provided by the state chancellor's office, they do say that they're going to refine uh what that roadmap is by the time of the May revise. And it builds on the existing efforts of the vision for success goals while establishing establishing some additional expectations for the system over the next several years. Now, the key goals in the roadmap include uh they want to enhance the timely transfer of students to four-year colleges. They want to improve the time degree and certificate completion. They want to close the equity gaps. And they want better alignment of the system with K through twelve and workforce needs. Um, although it's does not apply to as much, the the um the the uh budget um does make some changes with regards to the hold harmless provision of the student center funding formula. And it's extended through twenty twenty four twenty five. Uh, starting in twenty five twenty six, the funding that colleges receive or districts receive in in twenty five and twenty four twenty five represents a new floor below which the districts would not drop in their funding. And that the SCIF funding rates would increase to reflect COLAs after twenty five twenty six, but the hold harmless provision would no longer include total computational revenue TCR adjustments to reflect cumulative COLAs over time. So basically, whatever amount you got in twenty four twenty five, that's the amount you have going years out unless you start improving some of your um uh student center funding funding formula um matrixy items. But again, as we are a basic aid district, excuse me, community smorgasbord district, this really does not apply to us. Um, with regards to our overall funding, because what we receive in local property tax, student student fees um exceed what we would get under the SCIF um formula calculation. Um, here is some detail. Um, I'm, you know, I'm primarily the reason I've I've included some of this information is I do know that folks will probably download this PowerPoint presentation and will look at it. The items that have the very small alpha off to the right indicate those funding items that um has potential of increasing some of the funding uh for the college. And as you can see, out of the eight hundred forty one million dollars being made available, that's six hundred nine million of the first two items, and then we'll further down another twenty five million are not available to the district because they're either uh augmentations to the SCIF uh formula or are an augmentation of the part-time faculty health insurance program. Uh, currently, we don't offer um part-time faculty health uh to our employees. Um, but you can see the the other items, a lot of it is COLA to to a lot of our um um categorical pro programs. Of the one-time money, uh nine hundred and eighty eighty three million almost. Uh, most of it is going to deferred maintenance. And in fact, everything on this list, we have potential of receiving some additional funding at the moment, however. Uh, we don't have any guidance as to just how much funding that might be, excuse me. Of note in the budget, although it's not included in the budget for community colleges, there is thirty million dollars being made available for vocational training uh for forestry uh professionals, fire prevention. And community college could apply for some of this money. And the budget proposes a three point five billion dollar paydown of state pension liabilities. But unfortunately, it does not lower projected employer rate increases for CalSTRS and CalPERS. And and you can see from this note that uh CalPERS or CalSTRS is going up from sixteen point nine to nineteen point one percent and PERS is going up from twenty two point nine to twenty six point one respectively. Uh, just as a reminder, uh with regards to state requirements of the of the district budget proposals, well, we have to submit a tentative budget by July first. We have to have a adopted budget or adopted final budget by uh, you know, middle of September. Uh, we have to report um, you know, the CCFS three eleven by uh the middle of October. And then, of course, we have to submit an audit report to the chancellor's office by December thirty first of twenty two. Um, but we did all of these things on a timely basis for fiscal twenty twenty one. The next steps, um, we need to project the initial assessment of what the governor's January buzz budget does to the district's revenues and expenditures for twenty two twenty three, which is a segue into the next section uh where we need to redo this this um exercise after the governors may revise in the state's final budgets. And the steps we need to take now are following the college's budgeting process as outlined in our twenty two twenty three planning budget development timeline, which right now is currently in draft form. Questions?
Anyone? I don't see any questions. I don't see any hands raised. Thanks, Doug. It's a good segue segue into thirteen point four, which I'm sure there will be questions.
And I'm sure there will be two. Let me get let me get out of this one. Let me share again. Or Catherine, if you if you want to share it, that's fine by me too. Okay. Okay, I'll make this one big. Um. The items that are underneath the um tan colored heading, those columns are exactly the same columns that you saw when I first started talking about about the um the budget and the projection for for the unrestricted general fund for twenty one twenty two. All those numbers are are the same. But what is different is the column under under the blue, which is an initial initial Fund eleven projection of revenues expenditures for for fiscal twenty two twenty three. Now, probably the most important, well, to to explain these these columns. The the column that says footnote A increases at very last page, there there is a detailed footnote of what all of these uh increases are about. And then the projected budget is nothing more than the uh projection to year end amount projected forward to twenty two twenty three with based upon the increase that that is seen there. I'm not projecting any any major changes in in the federal incomers or state incomes. Um, but I am projecting about a three percent increase in our property tax revenue. That is in line with the increase that we had for the for the previous two years. Uh, other local um incomes is we are going to be getting a little bit um more money. Um. You know, based based on 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 some of the the increases for the state budget. Um. Scrolling on down, salaries and benefits, you know, again, you know, what I'm what I'm showing in that uh second from the right-hand column is the projection of the expenditure. And what the change is is in the very last column on on the right. Uh, for faculty faculty salaries and um the five percent increase is in line with a three percent increase in property taxes per the contract. The increases for the classified salaries is three point five percent. That is in line with the contract. And I have guesstimated a three point five percent increase in administrator salaries, although there has not been any um negotiated change as yet. Um, but you can see what each of those changes uh will be in that far right-hand uh uh column. From the revenue standpoint, you'll see that we're looking at an additional one point one million dollars in revenue. Uh, just in in the raw salaries amount, we're looking at about a one point two billion, two million dollar increase. Going down to employee benefits, um, the STIRS and PERS, you see a seven point eight percent increase in STIRS. That's reflective of both the five percent increase in um salaries according to the contract plus the additional increase of the increased uh funding rate for STIRS. Same thing applies for for the PERS funding rates. Uh, for the health and welfare benefits, um, the eight percent is is a guesstimated amount, however. Um, being that um the increase was three point nine percent last year and we are looking at a uh a definite increase in expenses thanks to um inflation. Um, I figure that we're probably going to be in health health costs generally will will cover their inflationary costs. Eight percent is 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 a fairly safe number. The rest of um the rest of the employee benefits are a blended rate of the uh increases uh in salaries above the five percent and the three point five percent. Uh, I spoke of a little bit earlier. Scroll down a little bit, Catherine. But that's an additional six hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars worth of expense. Okay, now you can go down the second, the next page. Thank you, Catherine. Um, and for the rest of the expenditures, I'm I'm factoring in a six percent uh increase due to inflation, which is a blended rate of last last year's of the inflation for twenty twenty one and the inflation uh currently seen for for twenty 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 one twenty two. And if you can scroll down a little bit bit more, Catherine. The bottom line or well, again, you know, same thing applying to other outcome. And the OPEB goes up by whatever the increase in the health well, health benefits goes up. Now you can scroll down to to the bottom, Catherine. Yeah, next page. So bottom line, you know, we're looking at increased revenues of about one point one million. And we're looking at expenditures of approximately two point one million dollars. So we're looking at um as an initial projection, a reduction or expenditures in excess of our revenues by about a million dollars. Which if we are going to try to maintain our uh ongoing revenues within our own our ongoing expenditures within our ongoing revenues, we are going to have to come up with ways to reduce that number. Now, I know we're we're looking at currently the the SERP. Um, and I know that we'll be getting a better idea of what's happening there in um in March. Hopefully, the um governor's budget may um provide some funding as as a relief to the increases in the PERS and STIRS rates. That might help us, you know, to the tune of a couple hundred thousand dollars. And hopefully, you know, our our tax revenues will will um be higher than 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 what I've I have calculated. But based on the information that we have now, if everything stays the same and the the, you know, projection percentages that I've I've used uh come to fruition, this college needs to to make some some decisions about how it's going to to um deal with with um the currently projected deficit in twenty two twenty three.
Uh, thanks, Doug. I think.
Uh, well, it's it's better if you know ahead of time than.
I I say that I say that tongue in tongue in cheek. Um, I really.
We wish we had money that we had hidden away.
Right.
And I'm sorry if 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 that that whole hidden money thing is is it's it has been a a sore point with me for for years. And so I hope I haven't taken it out on 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 anyone.
Um. Not at all, Doug. It's all all the information's appreciated, and I think we we need to have these discussions. So um I I thank you for leading that uh that work.
Absolutely.
This. I have a few questions, but would love to hear if the board has any other uh questions to Doug's uh presentation.
Um. And I would add that I think I'm going to be sharing all this information with uh our planning and budget committee on on the twenty eighth, so.
Thank you.
Um. Bless you.
Thank you. So Doug, you kind of mentioned, I mean, this is it's a pretty meaningful shortfall. Um, so, you know, in consideration that, you know, if if SERP isn't probably, I mean, do you think SERP isn't going to be, you said SERP is probably not going to be enough to bridge this this funding gap?
Well, no, actually.
Speculative right now, right? So.
I'm not, I'm not sure what SERP is 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 going to do. Um, it's it's really a matter of, you know, who takes the SERP? Um, because generally, in order in order for SERP to provide the the kind of permanent reduction that we're sort of looking for to handle this deficit on a long-term scale, that that generally means that there will be some folks who will leave and will not necessarily be replaced. And that's and depending on which department folks leave, um, that that can be in some cases, you have to replace some of these folks. And so you're um, the they're not the same kind of long-term benefits that you would get from a SERP. the they're not the same kind of long term benefits that you would get from a SERP.
Even looking at, you're looking at the presentation from December from Keenan. One of the more um, rosy pictures would maybe get us there, but that was
Well, and and some of the numbers that they throw out there are are a cumulative number for a number of years. So if you do the division, it's sort of like, oh, that's not as much as we were hoping.
So, and trustee Iverson, I see you have your hand up. I just wanted to kind of finish this. So SERP is probably not going to, we just don't know. Um, we don't know what the state budget revise is going to say. We don't know if property taxes are going to increase, and we all hope hope that they do, but hope is never a very good strategy. Um, I'm just kind of thinking, do do we need to realign the budget, perhaps reduce costs further um, i- in order to to bridge the gap?
Well, you know, when when we say, you know, re- reduce the 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 costs further. When almost ninety percent of of, you know, our expenditures, or at least the high eighties, are in the area of salaries and benefits, uh, when you're saying reducing costs. The question becomes, how do you do that? You know, we have have a certain obligation to the um, our full time employees. One of the areas that that reductions um, can be made is in our discretionary spending, which um, includes the um, size of the schedule that that we offer and the number of of adjunct faculty that we hire to um, fit that schedule. But of course, when you do that, then it also affects your enrollments.
Yeah.
So it's a, it is not something that can be done easily. It 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 takes a lot of uh, planning, and it takes time to to come up with 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 an answer.
Thanks, thanks Doug. I I trust, yeah, trustee Iverson, I think you're
I think you kind of covered my question too. I mean, I really am just looking, what are some of the ideas that have been uh, discussed at this point as this was being crafted, I guess? Just to be more direct, like what are, aside from a SERP and HOPE, what are some short term fixes or long term fixes that we can put in place now?
Wow. Generally, what I've seen in in cases like this would be you know, delays in in hiring, if if there's a position that you absolutely have to have. You know, that can that can save um, some monies. One of the other areas is to look in at the expenditures in the unrestricted general fund and identify those expenditures that could be funded through a categorical program. We have several categorical programs that have funding, and some of the work that we are currently doing could be uh, or could qualify as an expenditure under some of those programs. You know, we we do some of our, some of our work is 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 being done to offset the impacts of COVID. Uh, we are certainly looking at those to move those expenditures again to Fund twelve um, as those are categorical uh, funds. Um, so yeah, it's 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 finding the expenditures that we can move out of Fund eleven and delaying some of the expenses if if we can, and it's really kind of looking at everything that we are are doing. There's no, there's no one area that that, you know, is is the panacea for for coming up with 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 um, an amount like that. Um, as I said, you know, hopefully, we get some indications that that, you know, taxes will be better. But two years running, about three percent. You know, it's probably, you know, that that's probably going to be about what we're going to be doing next year. But again, these are our projections based upon the increases that I have have there. And I was just to get an idea of, based upon what the governor has has put in his budget, what can we expect next year? These are not hard and fast numbers, and I'm not trying to to um, specify any kind of changes to the contract or amounts that have yet to be negotiated. It was just an exercise to give the board an early look in the district as to what is ahead of us and what possibly is ahead of us. And if we need to do anything, um, you know, to change our our course, this is the time to make the plan, start making the plans in twenty one, twenty two for the things that we're going to do in twenty two, twenty three.
Trustee Baker?
Um, yeah, I was just gonna say, um, yeah, this is obviously not going to fit, get fixed in one year. This is something that we've got a a pattern of behavior that needs to be corrected to, you know. But um, I think it would be helpful um, between now and March, so perhaps for next month. Um, since we won't have the actual numbers for SERP until March, to maybe have um, Dr. Frost work with his team to come back with some different tiered scenarios. So like, if SERP takes care of it all, then yay, we all Michael brings some wine, um, but uh, but if that doesn't happen, then here's option B, and if that doesn't happen, then here's option C. And then if that doesn't get us there, then here's option D. And and because we got to get over, we have to get over this next hump. But we also got, you know, which includes the ACCJC and FICMAT and all of that. Um, but I think, you know, hopefully, if we could get ourselves course corrected moving forward, we will you know, if we are able to apply for some of these funds and get some of these funds that come from the state, great. But we can't count on it. We've got to pretend like it's not happening. And um, and then if we get it, yay, more wine from Michael, so.
I I totally agree. And any other trustee comments, questions? Well, yeah, trustee Baker, I I completely agree. I think in your comment, I think we need to and as as Doug alluded to, not not suggesting taking any particular action, um, but I think everything, we just need to know exactly where, you know, what are the district's options, I think, at this point, and let's just go through it, I think, one by one and and put everything out on the table. Dr. Frost?
Well, I I just, I would add a couple of things because I I think this dialogue is really important. Um, what I'm sensing is that, and Doug and I, as as he prepared this, I I threw a lot of questions at him because I really wanted exactly what you just saw. I wanted to see it all laid out as clear as day what what the college is facing. I do want to add and I haven't, you know, I really haven't had a chance to do much with with Dr. Parker yet, but to her credit, she has reduced the schedule some already this semester, and that was practically uh, it's pretty much on her own, and I think one email I sent, and you know, so it's it's her good work with her deans, but I I want to say they went from five hundred and sixty five sections to below five hundred. And there 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 will be some cuts still. And then we have the late starts that, so our enrollment picture could could improve. But her her section efficiency has gone up by probably four students a a on average. Just as a result of the the uh, so there is some attention being given to that. Frankly, we we've lived very comfortably for a long time, and that efficiency is it's painful to push it upwards because people aren't used to it, but that needs to improve. A second one, and I'm just, I want to, I want the board to kind of see where where we're already thinking, um, so so we, you know, we at least have a starting point. You know, in the event that a position is vacated, um, as as Doug mentioned, the ability to re either keep that vacant for a year or more, or reorganize it into uh, a more efficient, you know, a salary we can afford. You know, those are, those are things I'll be looking at in my time here. Um, I think beyond that, we do have to hope for the SERP. Um, and we we really haven't discussed anything beyond that because I've only been here for a week, but I I do certainly seek seek uh, input and direction from the board on next steps there too, because the next steps frankly are painful after that.
Thanks, Dr. Frost. I think it's just good for the board to completely understand what what all of our options are. Um, so, yeah, thank you, and and thanks Doug for uh, for all the great work you've been doing. Just continue.
You're welcome.
Real quick, Doug, when's your last day?
Thirty first.
So we won't see you again, will we?
No.
That makes me very sad. You have been such a blessing, honestly. It was so, we've been so lucky to have you.
We're not, we're not letting him go that easily.
I'd like to hear that.
Dr. Frost, my wife can overhear this conversation.
I'm sorry, Doug.
Thank you again, Doug. Thank you. Um, moving on to item sixteen point one. Uh, review of a board policy BP forty three hundred. Catherine, if you want to o- open it up or whatnot, I'm uh, kind of going through this and getting up to speed as a president, I think one piece and that I'm looking forward to at the our our CCLC a conference next week is a real thorough board policy uh, training. And um, yeah, I think, like, we, as we've been going through and approving and knowing how important these board policies are, especially with the FICMAT, which I was able to speak with the FICMAT folks um, uh, last week too, and just needing to, you know, really be on top of board policies and um, understanding, you know, how they they um, work in terms of the entire scheme and making sure that they're very thorough and thoughtful, and also they pointed out too, which is one piece is is making sure that you're being um, you're using the CCLC guidelines and their um, uh, you know, basically form or suggested um, of board policies in terms of guidance, in terms of formula, formulating, you know, which we've never really had an opportunity to do is is compare, you know, what CCLC uses is a is a kind of a a form of board policy for each of these, so, um, you know, I then Catherine, I don't know if you want to open up in terms of the difference, or if the board members were able to kind of see the differences between the CCLC template um, guidelines. And just, I think, some significant um, differences in terms of what the government code is so um, and and what is required under the government code too, so you have to, the board is okay with that. I'd like to actually just table this and and for those folks too that are going over the um, you know, to the CCLC conference um, next week, just have an ability for us to do some training, more training on on board policies. And then after that, we can kind of bring this back and and I think continue to to work through our board policies. Uh, Dr. Frost, I don't know if you have any sort of comments on that, something I think that we we've discussed and you've been been very helpful, I think, in in terms of just isn't, not this board policy in in particular, but I think just in terms of getting through the process of making sure that we're getting through our our board policies in an inadequate manner for, in particular for for accreditation purposes.
Thank you for for this opportunity because, and Catherine, I mean, I I haven't looked at this um, but, so I'm I'm winging it here. But there are, there are three things that connect together very clearly right right in this moment for me. First of all, board policy, that is the exclusive domain of the board to create and be satisfied with the the adopted product. Okay? And then administrative procedure. The CEO, just as as says right here, and this is, you know, I couldn't have said it better, right in the very top line, the CEO shall establish procedures that regulate the use of that's how policy and procedure works. The board establishes policy that directs the president. The president establishes procedures. Okay? Those procedures are revised, updated, and improved over time. And that involves a consultation process with the campus and and the good practices of participatory governance. But there shouldn't be any doubt about where these are are created from and where they're managed from. Okay? And and I think, I I don't remember where it was earlier in tonight's meeting, but but there was, there was a comment about about procedures being developed elsewhere in the college, and I I'd never heard of that before. At all. So so I think, I think trustee Dodd, your comments are right on target in terms of the training that needs to take place, and by the way, I would suggest that kind of training should extend to the classified senate, to the academic senate, um, because it's something our community should really be, take on as a learning goal.
Uh, thanks, Dr. Frost. See, we have, I was gonna, it takes a a public comment. Catherine, do we have any public comment? I see Dr. Tahada's uh, hand raised.
Hold on. Uh, there we are. Um, I will uh, I will do allow to speak, I believe she's Dr. Tahada, I believe
Dr. Tahada, are you there?
There you are.
I am here. And I just want to share a concern. The way that I was trained and the way, and when I read ed code, and I'm going to say, when I read ed code, as I've been trained to read ed code by the state academic senate, and also as a two term commissioner on the ACCJC. Um, having done, I'm I'm actually on my twelfth uh, team visit, doing a comprehensive um, for ACCJC um, at another college. And my thirty years. There is something called collegial consultation that the district does with the academic senate on the ten plus one. And so, we have to come, when when, the way that we are trained is that yes, the board is the decision making body. However, the district and the board, just like the union, the faculty union and the district negotiate, the academic senate and the district do collegial consultation, which is mutual agreement. Um, earlier on Friday, we did put together a, we convened a task force um, to prepare um, the administrative procedure for a budget process. We are following ed code and Title V in doing that because that is a ten plus one. That is, the academic senate has purview over that process, as does the students who um, actually have a nine plus one in ed code. So students are mandated by law to be involved in that process. One of the things, and I don't know, I mean, we used to be a college and our board used to really understand this. We, this, this wasn't one of the issues that we have now. We, uh, you know, to say that, that policy, or first of all, board approves policy. The college, right? Through mutual agreement with the president The college, right, through mutual agreement with the president approves, um, administrative procedures that do not come before the board. Because it would be considered, the board would be considered micromanaging the processes and procedures in the institution. And that, that actually goes against standard four. So I, I just want to be clear and, and, and incidentally, when, when an office, and I'm going to use the office of the president in our case, and right now, there are fifteen counts of Title V violations, specifically dealing with how board policies are revised on our campus that actually are in violation and, uh, you know, I'm, I'm working with the senate leadership because we're getting ready to, we, we may be, um, reporting them to the chancellor's office. So this is serious in terms of the misunderstanding of the role of collegial consultation vis a vis the academic senate. And it, it, it's, it's concerning, especially in an accreditation year. There is, um, so I, I'm actually very happy that you all are going to go get some CCLC training. And I want you to know that CCLC is a guideline. But you have, our documents, board, the, the board policy and the APs must reflect the combination, uh, especially in ten plus one issues of the board perspective and the academic senate perspective. You need both to be represented in the, in the, uh, board policies and the administrative procedures. And it is my hope, um, that we can come to an understanding of the complexity of that, um, and the necessity of that. Because it does affect, it was because we violated our own budget processes that were mutually agreed upon. We are now facing this fiscal crisis. The violation of Title V in budget processes actually brought us to the brink, to, to this fiscal crisis. So it is important, and with all due respect, the academic senate does have a role to play um, in a board policy and administrative procedures, as do the students. Not that I'm inventing this, this is ed code and Title V and accreditation. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Catherine, is there any other public comment?
Uh, no, I do not see any other raised hands.
Thanks. All right. Well, closed public comment, uh, on, on this item. I think, uh, just addressing Dr. Tahada's, um, call, I, I, with the exception of the Title V violation, I don't disagree with anything and, and that she stated and totally, you know, my understanding of, of board policies and administrative policies is, was completely my understanding as well. So, um, I, I think just speaking to that, I think that's really helpful, um, to, um, to, to know that and to confirm that. Um, and, you know, I think for the, the proposed, I think Title V violations, I think we're taking that seriously. Um, Dr. Tahada, as you mentioned, I think you addressed those at our last meeting. We've asked, um, our council, um, is looking into that. Um, you know, really, uh, as we speak even before this board meeting. So she's thoroughly investigating, investigating those, um, those allegations as well. Um, um, but again, getting back to this particular agenda item, I think that it's, in light of all those, those comments, I think the need for a better understanding, just I know personally, I've never been trained on any of these board policies. I've never been trained on administrative policies. I've just been given, you know, high level overviews of what's this and what's that? And, and, uh, you know, how they all, you know, stand in, 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 in the, the, the district's business, um, so to speak. But really just not a real good understanding of best practices. And that's why I'm particularly looking forward to the CCLC, um, conference and training. And so, uh, which is why I would like the board, happy to take questions or any sort of comments, but would appreciate a, a motion to, uh, continue, continue this item.
I would make a motion to continue at the next meeting.
Second, trustee Iverson.
Thank you. Uh, so call for a vote. Uh, trustee Deluna?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Rios?
Aye.
Trustee Baldini?
Aye.
Student trustee Soto Gonzalez?
Aye.
Trustee Baker?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson?
Aye.
And all vote aye as well. Thank you. And so moving on to board reports, um, seventeen point, uh, one. Uh, do we have any board reports moving through DOS and VWT?
No, sir. Well, but.
Nothing from VWT too. Okay. And we don't have any sort of update from legislative affairs since we didn't meet. Um, Audit and Finance Committee trustee Rios, I don't think we have any updates there.
No.
Um, Real Property Committee, it's something I just neglected to mention, I think, in terms of our, uh, in terms of, uh, kind of taking a little more, being a little more active on the Real Property Committee. What I had in mind, uh, just in terms of kind of making this, the committee more active in, in future reports, is actually just going over, I think, one particular thing. And I've, I've, I've talked with trustee Rios about this too, who's going to be on the Real Property Committee again this year. Thank you, uh, trustee Rios. Um, is, is actually going over and understanding where we are in terms of our, um, our, our institutional planning documents. Um, you know, our facilities master plan, just something we haven't talked about. I can't recall, I could be wrong here, at least I don't think in the past two years. Um, I think somebody mentioned, maybe it was Dr. Parker, about our, our academic plan is, is, is ten years old. I don't know anything in terms of our facilities master plan, how old that is, but I'm sure it doesn't mention student housing. Um, so I, I, I think to be really helpful to have the Real Property Committee meeting, just at a very high level. I, I think we can just keep it, um, in, in terms of those master planning, those high level, uh, planning documents, just to get a better sense of where we're at and, and think about the next steps. And I don't think necessarily we take those next steps in this year, but looking towards, at least when we hire, you bring on a full-time superintendent and make them, you know, the judgment in terms of the call of, of when to, you know, the, the, bringing before the board for, for further action. But that's something I was thinking, so I just, I just wanted to share that real quickly. Um, uh, trustee Goff, any updates on the McPherson, uh, distinguished teaching award?
Yes, I received an email from Dr. Sarah Parker and they are beginning the process. And we hope to meet, uh, sometime in the spring. I don't know if Dr. Parker doesn't seem to be on, but, um, coming up, coming up really soon, probably end of February, uh, March. I might have an update for you.
Great. Thank you. Um, Dr. Shank Award, uh, trustee Deluna?
Uh, no, not, not anything for now.
Great. Trustee Iverson, uh, foundation report?
No, just really looking forward to sitting down with, uh, Intrum Frost and Jessica, our executive director, and then Malcolm as well. And, uh, discussing a great article in the Register on the Evelyn Allen. So good things and more to come.
Yeah, that was a, a great, a great write-up too. Um, and I think, Dr. Frost, you might have sent out that, that email update. That was, that was a real nice, um, piece in terms of information about, um, Evelyn. So, um, uh, trustee Deluna, anything on accreditation as steering committee?
No, not since last meeting, not yet.
Great.
But I'm sure a lot to be coming.
Yeah, no, I know, I know. But yeah. Um, so let's see, so future agenda item request, request.
Got a lot on our plate already.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I think once we have a new, um, or we're getting closer to hiring a permanent superintendent, um, I have some requests, but not for now.
Yeah, let's, uh, maybe, um, maybe, uh, Vice President Iverson can kind of go over this a little bit further and maybe talk about where we stand on these particular, I don't want to let these kind of stand out here for too long without any sort of real thoughtful approach on, you know, what makes most sense to address first. And also I think what's the most significant in light of, you know, the board goals that we discussed earlier, um, earlier this evening. Does anybody else have anything? With that said, does anybody have anything to, to add to agenda item request? All right. Thank you. Uh, trustee and board, uh, reports, trustee board reports. Trustee Deluna?
Uh, so I just wanted to say really quick, um, happy Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Day. And, um, this year's theme from the King Center is, um, the beloved community. And there are a lot of events within the Napa County, um, that kind of celebrates service and, um, and in the spirit of creating the beloved community. So, um, I hope that if anybody has some time or would like to, um, honor Dr. MLK, um, by doing some service, um, projects, you can, uh, look online. And there are a lot of agencies, uh, all of our nonprofits that are, um, putting stuff together for that. Um, and I also just wanted to, um, thank Dr. Parker for what she said. She said, and I, I had to write it down because I loved it, um, who we are and who we want to be. And I, I just really love that, um, you know, that's, that's just something inspiring. And I hope that we can, um, keep a positive outlook with the steps that we're taking right now um, to make our school what we really want it to be and, um, in the future of what it can be. So, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Trustee Goff?
Uh, I just want to, um, you know, along with everybody else, thank, uh, Doug Roberts for all of his hard work and, and getting us ship shake, shape. I know we're not in a position that we're proud of yet, but it seems like we have a clearer picture. And I really appreciate all your hard work on that. I also want to welcome, uh, Dr. Frost. Uh, I know you're going to spend the next six months working your little fingers to the bone on our behalf and getting us all ready for the future. And I really appreciate your efforts. Um, and I hope that you feel welcome. I think you do. Um, but it was great, um, working with you both tonight. And I, again, thank you so much for all your work on, on behalf of the college.
Uh, trustee Rios?
I have no report. Thank you.
Trustee Baldini?
And thank you again, Doug Roberts. I appreciate all your help and welcome aboard. Dr. Frost, look forward to meeting you. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, student trustee Soto Gonzalez?
Uh, I have nothing really to report, just wanted to welcome Dr. Frost to the party.
And good luck in welcome week, this week.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Uh, trustee Baker?
Um, not a whole lot to report. Um, first just wanted to say, I really love the idea of using the Real Property Committee to kind of revisit our facilities master plan. And there was also like a, a space audit or something that was done a couple of years ago that went by the wayside with COVID. So that might be something that could be visited there as well. Um, but, uh, also welcome Dr. Frost. Uh, if I could back up into last year a little bit, uh, did get to go to a couple of in-person graduation ceremonies, which was weird and exciting. Um, got to go see the Nutcracker at the pack, which was fabulous. And, um, the only other thing I've really been up to, uh, other than starting a new job is, uh, last week I was sort of accidentally invited to something that turned out I wasn't supposed to be there, but I was, but I wasn't, and then I was, and then I wasn't. So anyway, but I went to about fifteen minutes, two times, uh, to the, um, AP sixty-two hundred task force, the Fiscal Policy Task Force, which had just, uh, in the few moments that I was there, I didn't contribute anything. But I would just, just being there and, and seeing the energy that was in the room or in the Zoom, if you want to call it, say that, say that, was really positive. And, and just, it was really great to see people from the different constituent groups really working together and, and just being, um, excited to really roll up their sleeves and get this stuff done. So, um, we've got, we've said it over and over again, we've got really great people here. Yeah, we're kind of in a mess, but we've got the right people to get out of it. And, and, um, Doug, you've been so instrumental in, in getting us where we have a clear vision of where the problems are. We, uh, the rose-colored glasses are in the garbage, but, uh, we're ready to tackle it and, and get her done. So thank you for your service and we will miss you. Uh, and, uh, hopefully you get to do something that you think is fun. I'm sure that my idea of your, of fun and your idea of fun, but probably not the same thing. I mean, maybe you count numbers when for fun too. I don't know.
Well, thank you for that. It's, it's actually some long overdue honeydews that.
I don't doubt it. Well, thank you so much for being with us for, for this very challenging stretch and for getting us, uh, on the right footing to, to move forward. That is all.
Thank you, trustee Baker. Trustee Iverson?
Uh, just want to thank the, the district, everyone that's a part of, uh, what makes Napa Valley College, Napa Valley College. Welcome, Dr. Frost. Thank you, Doug, and, uh, good job, trustee Dodd, on your, your first chair meeting. Happy New Year, everybody.
Thank you. I, I'm gonna keep my, uh, report, uh, limited. Uh, but I did also want to echo, uh, the rest of the trustee's comments about, about you, Doug. Thank you so, so much for everything that you've done. Um, I mean, I think a public servant in every sense of the word. And I, I, I hope you're a significant other. Your better half knows that. And how much we, we very much appreciate and how much of a, a wonderful servant you have been to, to this community. And, and really stepping up and, and supporting the district. So, um, thank you, thank you, thank you, on behalf of everybody. Well, I'll, uh, call this meeting, uh, adjourn this meeting at nine twenty PM. Thank you.
Can I, can I do it?
Oh, please.
Here we go.
At nine twenty PM. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Night. Night, everybody.
Good night.